Sherlyn Holm and Joanne Osborne will not be here. So, we'll go down to, we have three items on discussion tonight for our work session. Let's start with 3.1. The first item will be, the agenda, on the agenda is to provide an overview of the utility rate study and long-term financial plan and status of the city's utility rate study currently underway. And, I guess, would you like to introduce the guest before I stumble over myself?
I'd love to. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council members. Tonight, we have a presentation from our utility rate consultant. We went through a procurement and qualifications-based selection, and the committee, internal committee, selected the firm of Economist.com to provide the rate analysis and eventual rate recommendation. Dan Jackson is the president of that company, and he has done considerable work, which he'll share with you in the presentation. He'll provide an overview of really what is going to be proposed in this study, and really have a discussion, have a discussion with you. Feel free to ask questions if you have them as he goes along, and I'll conclude with kind of the next steps that we anticipate.
Welcome, Mr. Jackson. I've heard a lot about you. Everybody has great confidence into you, about you and what you have to say, so we look forward to hearing the presentation.
Well, thank you very much. I do appreciate it. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to work with the city of Goodyear. It's a real honor to be here tonight, and hopefully, the advice and the analysis we provide you will help you address and act regarding some of the very difficult decisions that you and other cities here in Arizona have with regards to water and wastewater rates in the 21st century. The presentation I have tonight is a presentation that is more geared towards introducing the concept of a rate study. What does a rate study and financial plan hope to accomplish? What are the goals that are set for a study like this? It's much more than just a report that you write and drop on someone's desk and walk away. The idea behind a rate study is to provide you a tool that you need in order to make some of the policy decisions that will impact your utility and your ratepayers now and in the future. Our world exists on information. Information flow is the key to making correct and proper decisions, and this rate study will provide you that basis of information. We're not going to be providing you any rate recommendations tonight. That is still under development. It's a fairly lengthy process that you go through in order to come to rate recommendations. It's sort of like building a pyramid, where the rate recommendations is the very top stone you put on the very top of the pyramid. You have to do a lot of analysis, a lot of work, a lot of meetings, a lot of presentations before you finally arrive at the final rate recommendation. So, in tonight's presentation, I'm going to start by giving just a brief background of Economist.com. I'm going to talk a little bit about water and wastewater rates in general. What's happening here in the state of Arizona, because it's very important for decision-makers like you to understand what is happening in the industry in general, because what's happening in the industry will affect the city of Goodyear's water and wastewater utility. Talk a little bit about some of the objectives of a rate study, and then we'll talk about some of the factors you consider when evaluating a rate plan. I often like to say that ratemaking is as much an art as it is a science. There are a lot of different rate plans that you could put into effect that will get you the revenues that you need to fund your operations and to meet all your debt requirements. The key question is, what is the most just, reasonable, and fair rate plan? Well, the answer is, is that the most just, reasonable, and fair rate plan is the rate plan that you decide is the most just, reasonable, and fair rate plan. Different cities approach it different ways, and that's why there are a lot of different factors you have to consider when you look at these rate plans. I'll talk a little bit about the plan, the Goodyear rate study that's in progress right now, and then I'll summarize by talking a little about the next steps in the process. First, a little background information on Economist.com. I'm sure the question has been arisen as, you know, who is this guy and why should we listen to you? Being the father of two teenage daughters, I hear that question a lot, believe me. Economist.com is an economic and financial consulting firm. It was founded in 1997 by myself and Mr. Robert Young. We're both veterans of the Big Six or Big Five or Big Four, or whatever it is, firm of Deloitte and Touche. Our primary office is in Dallas. We have an additional office in Portland, Oregon, and one of our consultants who's working on this project actually resides in Arizona. She lives in Eloy. She used to live in Portland and then made the wise decision that she no longer wanted to handle all the rain up there, so she moved to the more sunny part of the world. We have extensive experience in consulting. We've probably done about 300 rate studies all across the Southwest, across the United States, in Arizona, and in the Pacific region. We do a lot of work overseas in Guam and Saipan and American Samoa, where they're surprisingly enough addressing a lot of the same issues that you are. Water is a unifying factor that is being, that is struggling with, with a lot of utilities all over the world. Our specific Arizona experience, we've probably worked for about 40 cities in Arizona. Cities as small as Tombstone, cities as large as Yuma. We just got through doing a rate presentation for the city of Buckeye. We just put in a five-year rate plan for them. We've worked for cities like Florence and Safford and San Luis, a lot of work in the border region. So, it's really given us a real understanding of the challenges that you face here in the state of Arizona. Arizona is a wonderful place to live. I love coming out here. I'm out here probably two weeks a month. One of the, as great a place as it is to live, you have a big challenge, and that is the provision of water resources in the future. And that's a challenge that cities all over the state are facing right now, and we hope that some of the expertise we can bring to this process will help you understand how other cities are addressing some of the same problems that you're facing here. Whenever I do a rate presentation, or a council presentation, or a public hearing, one of the first questions that is almost always arises is the question of why? Why do our water and wastewater rates go up? I mean, water's the same today as it was 30 years ago. I mean, I turn the tap in my faucet and water comes out. What's different today than it was in 1980? Why should it be more expensive? I think that's a fair question, but it's a question that deserves a response. You see, you run your water and wastewater operation like you run a business. You want the revenues from your water and wastewater rates to cover all the costs of providing that service. And so, like any business, when costs go up, you've got no choice but to pass those costs through to your ultimate ratepayer. But one of the advantages you have is that you're a nonprofit entity. You're not in this to make money. You're in this just to cover your costs. So, when we talk about rates and costs, all we're asking is ratepayers to pay you what it is costing you to provide that service. And to the extent that you put in rates that are below costs, you're basically subsidizing that water and wastewater operation. Well, like any business, you're subject to inflation. Cost of everything goes up by 2% to 3% a year, and so, why should water and wastewater rates be, costs be any different? Also, when you look at the cost of water and sewer service, a lot of those costs are going up at rates even higher than the rate of inflation. Some of the fundamental key components of water and sewer costs are things like chemicals, electricity, insurance, workers' compensation, gasoline. All of those are going up at very high rates, and once again, as those costs go up, you have to pass it through to your ratepayers. Another factor that is very important in the water and sewer industry are capital improvement expenses. It costs a lot of money to build a water and sewer system. It costs a lot of money to deliver that water and treat that wastewater, hundreds of millions of dollars. Well, like any asset, after a period of years, it's going to start to wear out, and you've got to repair and replace those treatment plants, those pump stations, those lift stations, and that costs a lot of money. But you have to do it because your ratepayers expect a high quality of service, and to the extent you don't do it, the quality of service is going to deteriorate, and many people are going to find that unacceptable. So, the costs of maintaining, the capital costs of your system are a key to why water and sewer costs are going up. And finally, here in the state of Arizona, the acquisition of water resources is becoming an increasingly critical component of your total costs. So, what's happening in the industry? Well, I guess it's pretty simple. The average utility is facing these same issues as well, and as a result, over the last 15 to 20 years, the average utility in the United States has been increasing their rates 5% to 6% every year, more than double the rate of inflation. The American Water Works Association, the main trade organization in the water and utility industry, has put out position papers saying that they expect water and wastewater rates to triple in the next 15 years across the country. I think we've always been blessed as Americans that in the 20th century, we had access to a resource that we literally could not live without, water and sewer service at a remarkably low cost. Well, in the 21st century, we're still going to have that resource, but the unfortunate fact is that it's just simply going to cost more. Now, one thing to keep in mind when we talk about rates, particularly when we compare rates, and believe me, during the course of this study, we're going to be doing plenty of rate comparisons, because people like to know how their rates compare to other utilities. Keep this in mind, 30% to 40% of utilities charge rates that don't cover their costs. What that means is that their rates might be lower than yours, but they have made the managerial decision that they're going to subsidize their water and sewer operation from their general fund. Now, it's not illegal to do that. They can do that if they want. My personal opinion, that's not particularly good financial policy, but some utilities do that. So, utilities that have very low rates are utilities that more often than not are supporting their water and sewer system from their general fund. Bottom line is that costs are simply going up, and that's an unfortunate fact of life, but it's something that a prudent utility has to deal with. This chart right here really helps illustrate what's happening in the industry. If you look at this bar chart here, between the years 1996 and 2012, the average water and sewer rate went up by 5.19%, which is more than double the CPI, or the inflation rate of 2.5%. But this is what's really interesting, at least to guys like me who are, what's really interesting is that in the last three years, the average water and wastewater rate's gone up by 6.3%, 6.63%, I'm sorry, whereas the CPI, the inflation rate's been virtually identical. So, that not only are water and sewer rates rising at rates higher than inflation, the rate of increase is accelerating. So, that's something that's happening in the industry in general. Okay, we have utilities all over the state of Arizona and all over the country that are facing these same pressures. Their costs are going up. You know, obviously, nobody wants to pay more. Nobody ever wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason, and so, utilities are taking very aggressive steps, in my opinion at least, to try to limit the impact of cost increases on their utilities. For example, a lot of utilities are postponing capital improvement plans. They're just simply not making those repairs. They're kicking the can down the road. Some utilities are freezing salaries, and they're freezing hiring. Some utilities are deferring maintenance expenses, deferring some discretionary expenses. Well, that certainly has a benefit, because it keeps your costs down, but there are risks to that strategy also. One of the prime risks is that it can be very detrimental to a utility's financial health, and it can also be detrimental to the quality of service. If you don't make those repairs, the quality of service is going to start going down, and so, ratepayers generally don't like that. And so, that is something that you, that utilities need to deal with. They need to balance the increase in costs and the limitation of cost increases with the need to limit the deterioration of service. And so, finally, what that means is, most utilities just simply have no choice. You know, I've done, we've done 40 rate studies around the state of Arizona. Every single one of them, we've recommended rate increases, every single one of them. And so, rate increases are simply becoming a fact of life here in the state. Okay, now that we know that rate increases are necessary and that they're inevitable, many cities have decided to do exactly what you've decided to do. They've decided to conduct a long-term rate study and financial plan. Why do they do this? Why do they do rate studies? As much as we appreciate it, we need to tell you why it is that this kind of a process, this kind of a rate study is important. Well, you see, the purpose of a rate study is to develop a plan or framework to obtain the revenues that you need to fund the operations, while at the same time, to the best extent possible, minimizing the impact of any rate increases on ratepayers. You see, one of the benefits of doing a water and wastewater rate study is that it's fairly easy to predict when water costs are going to go up and when large expenditures are going to happen. Here we are in 2014. You know five to 10 years from now when that wastewater treatment plan is going to have to be expanded, or when that pump station is going to have to be replaced. You might need to expand that wastewater plant, say, in 2019. Well, here it is, 2014. If you know that, you can start designing a long-term rate plan that gradually phases in the rates that you need to fund that expansion, or that overhaul, or that replacement. And so, one of the things I've learned in my 30 years of experience is that ratepayers tend to greatly prefer gradual annual increases as opposed to one big increase. You see, a lot of utilities think they're doing the ratepayers a favor by keeping their rates down year after year after year, saying, "We didn't do, we haven't done a rate increase in seven years." Well, then they have to do a treatment plan expansion, and they've got to do a rate increase of 30%. And guess what? People open up their bills, and they see it's 30% higher than it was the prior month, and guess what? They're probably not going to be real happy about that. And guess what? They're probably going to let you know that they're not very happy about it. And so, when that happens, one of the first questions that many of my clients get is, "Why didn't you just phase this in over a number of years?" Because it's a lot easier to see your bill go up by $3 a month each year for five years than to go up by $15 to $20 a month at once. So, rate studies give you the information that you need in order to put together a long-term plan like that. You see, a study is not just a written report, although, trust me, the written report we give you is going to be a great one. I like to say, one of the things that we do in our studies is, we try to make them understandable to people who are not financial experts, and I make, we take a lot of pride in that, because I'm actually, I'm actually a writer in my spare time. I've written, I've had one or two books published, and so, I take a lot of pride in writing things that people can actually read and understand. And so, and so, we write these reports so that you can understand it, because it's important that you have that information at your fingertips when you make these kind of decisions. Because you see, a rate study is a tool that you use to implement your chosen policies. Its purpose is to give you information, and the information that you have is information that you will use to make the right decision for those ratepayers. So, what kind of issues do you address in a rate study? Well, there's a lot of issues that you analyze during the development of a rate study. For example, one of the key issues, particularly for the city of Goodyear, is growth. How will growth impact your rates in the future? Well, a well-managed utility can use growth to its benefit, because remember, for every new account that comes in, that's another customer paying a minimum charge, another customer paying a volume rate, and one of the fundamental components of water utility economics is that, is called economies of scale. It doesn't cost you twice as much to service 30,000 accounts as it does to service 15,000 accounts, and so, the more accounts you get, the more economies of scale you have. If you manage your growth properly, you can use growth to your benefit. I think the city of Goodyear has done a phenomenal job in managing your growth, particularly with regards to the impact fees that you've put in place, because you've enabled, your impact fees have enabled growth to pay the marginal cost of that additional growth. Another, another issue that you look at is-
Do you have a question here?
No, no, I'm good.
Oh, you all right? Sorry.
Okay, sure.
I guess he just wanted me to agree with something you were saying.
Sure. Another issue, and I touched on this already, is what new expenditures are coming down the road? You generally know several years in advance, and that really benefits you, because it helps you plan accordingly. How will the timing of capital improvements impact your rate plan? Capital improvements, capital expenditures impact rates two ways. How much do you need to spend, and when do you have to spend it? If you know that you're going to spend $50 million in five years to build a new water plant, then you can start planning for that right now. At the same time, if you're in a crisis situation where you need to make a lot of expenditures right now, that's going to mean that your rate adjustments might have to be a little higher in the more, in the near term. But how you structure your capital improvements is going to be key to what your rate plan ultimately ends up being. Another key one, particularly here in Arizona, is how will your investment in securing your future water resources impact utility operations and ratepayer monthly bills? One of the cities we work for is the city of North Chicago, Illinois. That's located north of Chicago, and they have a benefit. Their city is located right next to the largest body of fresh water on the planet, Lake Michigan. So, guess what? Their water costs aren't very high, and here in Arizona, unfortunately, water's a little harder to come by, and so, there's a lot of reasons not to live in north of, north of Chicago, starting with the fact that it gets awfully cold there in the wintertime. But, the geography does have an impact. Water resource and acquisition costs, not only for the city of Goodyear, but for other cities around the state, are going to be a key component of your current and future rate plan.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Just a general comment, because you hit on what I think is going to be critical as we kind of move forward. Because of, we have wet water, you have paper water, you have, if you pull it out of the ground, you have to put it back in, and I'm sure you're aware of a lot of this as it comes to Buckeye, but I think it's critical, in the report and the clarification, that the public clearly understands what's driving some of these, because my understanding, at some point, we're going to have to quit pumping, because the cost of putting it in the ground, or what is it, CAGRd, if I've got the acronym right, that cost is going to be so prohibitive that we're going to have to look at other ways of bringing water. So, I think part of it is educating the public that they're clearly aware, and also including in your written report, how that drives and is going to be driving our capital costs as we kind of move forward. So, I think that's a critical component of this entire plan.
Yes, sir, and you're absolutely correct, and that is a key component of the rate plan that we will be presenting to council at the, at the appropriate time, and it is going to be a major driver of your future costs. But, it is also important, because it will secure the future of this community. Community, you know, being, we have an old saying, we have a saying in Texas, and that is, whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting over. Those communities that secure their water resources are those communities that are going to survive in the future, and those communities that don't do not survive, and that is a fact of life in the 21st century. Okay, let's, just a little bit of background information on your water system. This is the water system in the city of Goodyear. This is I-10 right here. As you can see, the blue portion of this chart is all of the city's water and sewer customers. You have about 15,500 water customers. The dark blue is Liberty Water, and the red is Epcor. So, everything north of I-10 right now is basically private water companies. Everything south of I-10 is the city.
Except Goodyear people live there.
Yes, that's correct.
I just want to make that clear through this whole presentation, because I just don't want people listening to this, or reporters writing on it, that this is for the entire Goodyear, the idea of it is, but we don't control those water companies, and so, we hope they'll pick up the same message that you're giving tonight, and they'll see what we're doing, and that they'll, you know, they'll, they'll run their business the same way we do ours, so, excuse me. Go ahead.
Absolutely. And this is the wastewater system. Wastewater system, basically the same thing. Here, this is the city limits of Goodyear. South of I-10 is controlled by the city. North of I-10 is controlled by Liberty. Okay, just a couple of background charts on your rates. Key questions people ask is, what are our rates? Well, if you're a water residential customer here in the city of Goodyear, chances are you've got a 3/4-inch meter. The vast majority of residential water customers have a 3/4-inch meter to service their property. Those customers pay a volume rate of $10.23 a month for water service. On wastewater service, they pay, they pay a flat rate of $21.12. If you have a larger meter, you pay a larger minimum charge, standard policy in the water industry, because larger meters exert greater demand on your system, so it's justifiable to charge them a larger rate. You have what is known as a conservation-based volume rate structure. In addition to the minimum charge, you charge a volume rate for every 1,000 gallons of water people use. If you use between 0 and 6,000 gallons, right now, a residential customer pays $1.18 per 1,000 gallons. If you use between 6 and 12,000 gallons, that rate goes up to 2.36. Between 12 and 30,000 gallons, it goes up to 3.54, and above 30,000 gallons, it goes to $5.69. The concept behind this rate plan is, it encourages conservation, because there's an economic principle that says that if you raise the price of something, you get less of it. So, but, at the same time, those people that use water for what we call nondiscretionary purposes inside their house, washing, drinking, bathing, that kind of thing, those people pay the lowest rates for that water. Also, what it also means is that if you are a, if you're a family of five or six and you use 20,000 gallons of water a month, chances are, you're starting to use water outside your house for lawn watering, car washing, that kind of thing. Under this rate plan, you, you've got the water available to you, but you pay more for it, which gives you a financial incentive to, to the best extent possible, conserve your water usage. Inverted block rates are extraordinarily successful at getting people to conserve water and use water wisely. Our experience has been that cities that implement inverted block rates typically see a usage that declines per meter of about 10% to 15% over time. That's a lot of water that's saved. At the same time, if you're a, if you're a family, if you're a low-income family, or if you're a fixed-income retiree, please, living in a small home, you're probably only using a couple of thousand gallons a month, and you pay the lowest rate for it.
Sheri?
One question I was going to ask about your, your study. When, when you do it, are you going to be giving us a breakdown? Is there going to be a breakdown, so that we know how many of our customers fit into these different categories? Because I think that'd be really interesting.
Yes, and we will, we will have that information available, and if I recall correctly, I believe on the residential side, about 98% of your usage is 30,000 gallons or less. Yes, 60% of your water usage for residential customers is 0 to 6,000 gallons.
Wow. So, how many people? How many homes?
That is about, let's say, you've got about 15,500 accounts, okay? Now, remember this, if you're an accountant, you have 12 bills a year, okay? So, what that means is, in many months of the year, you're going to use 6,000 gallons or less, but there might be a couple of months where you use more than 6,000 gallons, say, in the middle of the summer. But, our estimate is that 60% to 70% of the residential bills that you send out every year are 6,000, are 6, are 7,000 gallons or less, because that's what your average usage level is, about 7,000 gallons. It's the average usage. So, 70% of your bills are about 7,000 gallons or less. So, what that means is, you don't have that many residential users that use 30,000 gallons. Only 2.2% of your residential customers use more than 30,000 gallons a month. About 13% use between 12 and 30,000 gallons a month. So, looks to me like you use water pretty wisely here in the city of Goodyear.
Then I have another question. When we go through this rate study and we're saying this is the infrastructure we need, are we going to address the quality of water? Because that is one question that keeps coming up, especially, you know, south of I-10, is the actual quality and the taste of the water. I don't know if that's for Bob.
Yes, go ahead. Should I pass that to Mr. Siemens? Because I know he's here. Sure.
Who's Mr. Siemens? Mr. Siemens?
You're up. That's the great thing about being a financial person. When a technicals question asks-
And I think you're absolutely right in doing that. Use the staff, or they're the experts. Sheri, you want to repeat your question? Turn that back on.
Yeah, my question was, because we're going to be addressing the, the infrastructure we need and why we need a rate increase and how this, why this is important, one of the questions the, the customer and the citizens have asked, especially up in our area and even this part of I-10, as you can tell by the bottled water, is, we, we get criticized a lot, because the taste of our water is not, it's not, I don't want to say drinkable, but most people get bottled water, and I think that's one thing they're going to say. If you're going to raise our rates so much, are you going to address this issue as well?
Counsel member Laura Tannen, Mayor Lord. Water quality, taste, and orders is a large issue that we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, and the, and the primary reason for that is two. One, we have a very high TDS in our water, so it's going to have a minerally salty taste to it. Second is that the temperature of our water is so high. Typically, what we'll do is, we'll recommend to customers who complain about the taste, is actually refrigerate the water first and get that, get it colder, so it tastes a lot better. There's not a whole lot that we can do in terms of changing the taste of the water due to the way that we actually treat and process the water. There are methods to do that, very costly to do that. So, it's a matter of getting, it's a matter of having to understand that the temperature of the water is really the predominant factor in the quality and the taste that we have right now.
I have a question now, when you say very costly, you know, because I'm going to say, okay, I'm up, I don't live up there, and our water tastes fairly good, and when I've been up in there, I've noticed the change, but, so I'm up there, I say, "Well, pay for, well, I'll pay for it, change it." So, when you say, "Costs a lot," people don't, what do you mean by, "It costs a lot"?
Mayor Lord, our water predominantly right now is pumped groundwater. We do process some of the water, portion of our water, through the RO system at Bullard Water Campus, but not all of the water. The water that comes from other sources right now, we treat for arsenic removal, that does not remove the TDS, and again, that's the predominant taste factor next to temperature. And again, that's the predominant taste factor next to temperature. It would have to, a direction of management council, looking at more RO is a way to do it, but that's where the expense is.
So just give us, I mean, nobody's going to hold you to this, but I think you've got to give somebody a dollar bill in their head, when they're thinking about something like this, of what, you know, the cost.
We are going to do that.
Oh, okay.
And these kind of questions are exactly the type of questions that need to be answered by the public. You receive them, we receive them, as the operators. And what is necessary is to provide factual information. There are different treatment processes, reverse osmosis, ultraviolet, there's a number of different technologies. Sometimes, production quantities will dictate what type of treatment that is necessary. Anything is possible, and those magnitudes of cost, and the, really, the dollar amount that would hit the rates, that's what we would propose to discuss in this engagement of the public, that's what we'll talk about later, and raise those issues, so the public understands what we're treating now, what, why, why the taste is what it is, and what can be done, if anything, and what would the cost be to change.
So what you're saying, then, and so the public understands this, they will see a number. At the end of this study, there'll be some examples, or you might say mental choices, because I'm not sure we'd go that choice, but, so that people could see that, is that correct?
Yeah, they will see what is practical for a municipal water system, in terms of treatment capacities, and then what would be the cost of those treatments, of a percentage, in percentage magnitude. You know, your water bill would be X, it would be increased by 30%, or 10%, or 5%, whatever that number would be.
Okay. Yeah, and I appreciate that, if we could get the numbers and everything, because I know it's not just the temperature, I know my ice cubes, this is, because I live up there, is, like, if they sit for a while, there's like sediment, like, kind of like dirt.
Grit.
Yeah, grit and dirt. And it's not just up there, when I lived down in Estrella Vista, just right across the way there, not too far, it was the same thing. So, I think if we can give people, this is what could be done, how much it costs, and then people can kind of get the idea whether it's realistic, or maybe we just stick with bottled water for drinking.
Thank you. Phil?
Mark, don't go anywhere yet, just in case. I realize we're talking about a rate study, but you're also talking about service, either options or enhancements, et cetera, based on what you just said, as we look forward to what...
Reviewing all the operational needs, and the present way that we're treating water, delivering water, and those costs, yes.
So I, is it safe for me to assume, then, that we will, as this whole process unwinds and comes through, that we'll have either partnership opportunities that may be brought forward, where we can work with other water providers to move water from CAP canals, for example, down into the city? I mean, are we looking at all of that, as we go through this whole process, aside from just the rates?
Yes, we'll talk about that later. Dan's going to be working with the rates, but as far as what the infrastructure, the, where the water is obtained, that is something that we'll talk about, how we'll develop those alternatives, and how we'll share that with the public and with council.
Will that be later tonight, or later in the process?
I'll get into that at the end of this presentation, we'll circle back on that.
All right, thanks. Sorry.
Sure. I wanted to just present this chart to give you kind of an example of the impact and the effectiveness of an inverted block rate structure. This right here is a comparison of Goodyear residential monthly charges at various usage levels. As you can see, somebody who uses 5,000 gallons of water and 5,000 gallons of wastewater service pays about $66 a month for that service, under the current rate structure. If you go to 10,000 gallons, it goes up to $76. But as you can see, if you go to 20,000 gallons, it goes up to $109, and if you go up to 30,000 gallons, it goes up to $145. Once again, inverted block, the more you use, the more you pay. And that provides a very solid incentive for people maybe to water their lawn only twice a week, instead of three times a week.
Did you just say lawn? Plants. No grass out there, right?
That's true. Once again, the rate, the rate plan that you ultimately adopt is much more than just a financial plan. It's a community, a social, and a political decision as well. And so for that reason, there's a lot of factors that need to be considered when a rate plan is evaluated, particularly when you're trying to answer that question of, what's the fairest rate? Well, when we, as we go through this process, some of the factors that should be considered are as following. One, when possible, try to limit the number of alternatives to be presented. I mean, this can get pretty complicated. I've seen rate presentations done, where people come up with 25 alternatives. Okay, here's alternative 17B, where we raise the residential inside by 6%, and the commercial large volume by 4%. And the people in the room who aren't asleep, don't have the slightest idea of what you're talking about. And so what we try to do is, we try to limit the number of alternatives. Obviously, there's always going to be room for tweaking and adjusting the rate plan. We're going to spend a lot of time with staff, before we even come before council, with any rate plan at all, just sort of vetting the initial alternatives. But try to keep it as simple and as straightforward as possible. Another thing to keep in mind is this, the cost of service is very important. Different customer classes have different costs of service. It costs you different amounts to provide service to an irrigation customer, or a commercial customer, or a residential customer. In a perfect world, you would like the rate to reflect the cost of service for each and every customer class. But you know what? We don't live in a perfect world. And there are many rate structures out there, where the cost is a little higher in some rate classes, and a little lower in other rate classes. And sometimes you just kind of shrug your shoulders and say, you know what, it's close enough. And another thing to keep in mind is that, commercial customers can write off 30% of their water bills, because it's a business expense. Residential customers can. And so that's a powerful incentive for some cities to set their commercial rates a little higher than their residential rate. At the same time, there's the other argument that says, on the other hand, you can say that you want to set the commercial rates low, to encourage economic development. And that's why Harry Truman always said that he wanted to have a one-armed economist. So you would never have an economist say, on the one hand, and on the other hand. Because you can do that all day long, and you can do that with rate studies as well. Another thing to keep in mind with rate plans, is that sometimes, it's very tempting to change the rate structure, as well as the rate itself. One example being, there are many cities that went from having a flat rate volume charge to an inverted block rate. Well, when you do that, when you change the rate structure, you're going to impact certain ratepayers differently. You might have some ratepayers that see no increase at all. And you have, and on the other hand, you might have some ratepayers that see a 30% to 40% increase, when you change the rate structure like that. Well, who do you think you're going to hear from? You're probably not going to hear from the people saying, hey, thank you for not raising my rates. Probably not going to get many of those calls, but you'll get calls from the people who get adversely impacted. Now, that's not saying you shouldn't do it, but it is something to keep in mind, when you evaluate a plan like that. Another thing, at least as far as we're concerned, is, we always believe that revenue forecasts should be as conservative as possible. A lot of cities in Arizona got badly burned in 2008 and 2009, because they had all these very, very aggressive assumptions for growth and revenues. Town of Queen Creek is one of our clients. They went from having over 1,000 new water accounts in 2008, to having 50 in 2009. You know, that caused some problems at City Hall, believe me. And so we try to be as conservative as possible with regards to our revenue forecasts, and that's why, you know, we're seeing some encouraging developments in the economy. Growth is starting to pick up a little bit, but let's be a little careful about getting too dependent on growth again. And finally, as I said this before, and I saw a lot of heads nodding, and that is, we see ratepayers tend to prefer gradual increases, as opposed to one big increase. Another thing to keep in mind is, timing is everything. Timing is critical, when it comes to implementing a rate plan. We typically recommend to our clients, that the autumn and winter months are generally the best months of the year to implement a rate plan. October, November, December. The reason is that usage is falling. So even though sometimes you do a rate increase, the bill in November may not be any higher than the bill in October. Believe me, we've learned this the hard way. I did a study once for Paris, Texas, where we implemented a rate adjustment in June. Turned out that that month not only was the hottest June on record, but they also, there was a glitch in the billing system, where the billing cycle went 45 days. So people got their first bill, and it was like double from the prior month, and they thought that was all due to the rate increase. It wasn't, it was partially due to the rate increase. So that's, I learned a very valuable lesson, since I barely got out of there with my life, and that lesson is, try to put rate adjustments in effect in the autumn and winter months. And finally, public rate presentations are really critical to this process. Not only are they mandated by the law, but the thing is, you've got a very good story to tell. You have a very important set of information, that you need to make sure the ratepayers know about, why these increases are necessary, and why these increases are going to make a better quality of service. Because, it's hard to believe, but there are advantages to rate adjustments. One advantage is, it will lead to a better quality of service, because you'll have the money to make the necessary repairs that you need to make. It will continue to assure that you have a financially healthy utility. Even healthy financial utilities can run into problems very quickly in this day and age, and that's why it's important to keep these adjustments coming. And finally, good rate, a good rate plan leads to a good quality of service, which leads to better economic development opportunities. Because when businesses look to relocate in cities, they want good quality utility service. And if you have a good rate structure in place, you'll be able to offer them that good quality of service. What's a successful rate plan? Well, like I said at the beginning of the presentation, there's a lot of different rate plans that can go into effect, that will get you the revenues you need. The key is, what is the, what, the successful rate plan is one that will obviously enable you to get the revenue you need. By definition, if it doesn't give you enough money, it's probably not going to be a successful plan. But, that successful plan also is one, is to the best extent possible, does minimize the impact on ratepayers, because nobody wants to pay more. And finally, the successful rate plan is the one that gets the highest number of ratepayers to accept the need for and reasonableness of the rate plan. One of the privileges I've had in working in Arizona over the last 30 years, is that I've found that most ratepayers are pretty rational. You know, you explain it to them, a lot of them are kind of, are going to kind of shrug their shoulders, and they're going to say, you know, I don't love it, but I understand why it's necessary. There's always going to be that element of the population, that's not going to agree with it or accept it, no matter what you tell them. But, what you look for is to try to get the greatest number of people to accept the need for it. Well, just to summarize, rate-making is not just a financial decision, it's a social, community, and political decision. There's going to be a lot of different ways you can go with this rate study, but the right plan is the one that you decide is the most just, reasonable, and beneficial to the utility. In the coming months, we'll be back before you again. We're going to help provide you, provide the information you need, and hopefully, the information we give you will lead you to make the decision that is most appropriate for the city. Next steps?
Sure, thank you, Dan. I'm going to try to wrap up by sharing, giving you feedback on the questions that you raised during this presentation. How do we communicate with the public? How do we explain, tell our story? We thought that a citizens advisory committee is probably the right method to, what we're trying to do is integrate the public's value into the decision-making process. How do we get, how do we engage them? How do we share the challenges that we face? And how do we tell it in an understandable form? The committee would be appointed by council. It would take about a month to sit. Once we had them seated, in, probably in June, they would begin to hear presentations from both the department, the staff, Mark and his staff, Mark Holmes, Larry Lang in Finance, would be presenting the financial essence of how we're currently supporting our facilities. But then, we would go into, what's the cost for the operation? And some of the questions that I heard about the treatment, what are our challenges with treatment? So we'll talk about operational issues, and why the costs are what they are. That foundation is really necessary for a citizens advisory group to understand what the challenges are, going forward. Through that process, there will be a public meeting, where there'll be agenda, and also summaries of discussions that are held, and outcomes. The committee may have a preference of looking at RO treatment to handle the TDS situation, and what would that cost? That information would be developed in that setting. The next part of this would be, to get more into the planning component, would be our long-range plan for the water and wastewater plan. We had our last study in 2007, '08, it was adopted. What is really lacking in that is the water resources plan for that, the build-out of the city. It didn't contemplate, really, the bringing in the cap supplies to the city in a timeframe. What does that cost? What's the most efficient way to look at introducing that into the system? All of that information can be handled, and will be investigated through that study. That currently is not approved, it will be coming back to, it will be coming to council through the budget process. There'll be one of the CIP additions, that will be up to the council to consider proceeding with that study. If that study is approved, that study would start in early July. As that work progresses, it will become valuable information for the citizens advisory committee to get those updates, as far as what they learn, and what their assessment is of the system, and what their proposed changes are. So we will have, in essence, the rate consultant, the Economist.com, proceeding with the analysis of the dollars and cents, really, the cost of it, and how to spread those costs over, and if there are any rate changes that are appropriate. But you have the consultant driving the discussion, as far as what's needed from an infrastructure standpoint, and maybe an acquisition of new water resources. A plan will be developed, which will be funded, which will be priced out and given to Dan, so he can run financial analysis of the various alternatives, and have that for discussion, and feedback from the citizens advisory committee. Once a recommendation is made, once we have the financial model established, the committee will weigh in in that phase also. They will provide their comments, and those comments, then, will come from staff to council for your consideration. Now throughout this process, council will receive updates, as far as what the activities of the committee are. Press releases will go out, circulating information about water quality, about future acquisition of water supplies. So we had hoped to educate the community, as well as have the formal discussion, a informal discussion of the committee, to really ask what the, ask the tough questions. Do you really need this? What's the value of this? How important is it to have this improvement in, at this point in time in the city? So that's what the intent would be for the citizens advisory committee. That, could you press, go one more? With the two studies, we think that the process will length, will be lengthened, and it will take up to eight months, eight to 10 months, to complete. So that puts us into a point in early part of next year, during budget, during a review of next year's budget, to make a recommendation to council for adoption in January 2016, a year from next December. That leaves us with about a three-year, a three-year gap, since the last rate increase. There may be a need to look at an interim rate increase, this January, this coming January, January 15, just as an escalator for the operational cost increases, not the full-blown effort, as far as what this analysis will yield, but just a placeholder, so that we have an escalator, it doesn't result in a significant increase in the future. We don't know that yet. We're going to be meeting this week with the city staff, and with Dan and his firm, to really evaluate what the needs are. But that is a possibility, that could happen. And then finally, we have the pre-treatment ordinance is going to affect. It doesn't affect a lot of people, but there are a handful of businesses that are involved in the pre-treatment program, and they'll have annual fees that will become effective with the adoption of that ordinance, and I just wanted to mention that. So we're all aware of that. With that, the presentation, we'd like to answer any questions, or pick any comments at this point.
Questions?
I have a couple.
Councilman Campbell?
Okay. I didn't interrupt, because you were going on, you were on such a roll. I just have a couple of questions. When was the last time we did a water rate study, or have we ever done one?
The last...
That dealt with water rates?
Rate study was 2007 or '08?
Okay.
2008.
Okay. And at that time, did they recommend an increase in utility costs?
There was a three-year rate increase schedule that was put into place.
Four years?
And then the last element was in January of... And the last element was in January of 2013.
But the last one, we had a little bit of delay in between because of the downturn. We, as a council, decided to change the date that one was due, as I remember. Brian, was that correct?
Okay. So we did a study, and we recommended a four-year increase. So when we do this study, and it comes back to this council, are we going to be making a recommendation for a certain timeframe for a rate increase so that we revisit this again in four years? Because if inflation is going up, as you say, 2% to 3% every year, is four years usually the length of an increase if we so desire to do one?
That's a fairly typical timeframe, because when you do financial projections, obviously, projection is not a guarantee, it's a prediction based on a series of assumptions. So what many cities do is they implement three- to five-year rate plans, and then sometime, generally in the fourth, the fifth year, they then reevaluate it. Sometimes you do it more rapidly if there's been a significant change in the economic environment since then. Let's say you do a five-year rate plan beginning in 2015, but some cataclysmic event happens to the economy in 2016, then you might want to do a reevaluation a little bit more quickly. But typically, what a lot of cities do is they like to do multi-year rate plans because that helps them not only convince bond advisors that they will have the revenue to fund any future debt, but it also ensures that the utility will continue to be financially healthy.
Okay. So it'll be reasonable if we so choose to go for a five-year plan?
That's correct. The study itself will actually project rates over 10 years, but we don't typically recommend that you do a 10-year rate plan because, I mean, who knows what's going to be happening in 2020?
Not in Arizona.
Right. All right. And one more question, and I should know this, and I apologize for not knowing this. Larry, may I ask you, can we continue to use impact fees for growth for sewer and water connections? We're still okay to do that? And we're estimating that it'll cover it?
So the mayor is just going to answer that?
The answer is yes. Development impact fees, they go into effect August 1st with the new rates that we'll be having for those, so that's one that council's taking action on. So it's set in place, and it'll actually kick off August 1st.
Okay. Because that's going to be one of the questions that the residents ask us if they know we're redoing our impact fees, if we're able to recap some of the costs from the developer. And we don't want the residents to think that they're having to pay for all this new growth when they're already here, you see?
Right.
But it'll be easier to talk to them and tell them why we need to make their water better, or to ensure that they get their water by knowing that they're paying for what they're getting, not from the new development.
Well, I'd just like to interject as a mayor in there. I think that's not the true story.
Oh, it's not?
No. I do not think that's a true story. Progress and increase in your population, this city is moving from, okay, say, we're at 72,000 now, what are you looking like in five years now? We're going to be up to maybe 100,000?
It'd be close to 100,000, yes.
Okay. So, yes, when you move into an area like this, there's only so much water, so the more people that come in... And cities are not designed to stop growth so that individuals can have a consistent water bill. It just... I mean, that's just not the name of the... That's just not what it's like.
Well, I wasn't inferring that.
No, no, but I'm not... No, you weren't inferring, but I'm just trying to explain that you cannot... I say constantly when I'm out there, if there's one thing that it's going to increase for the entire time you live in the state of Arizona, it's going to be water. And that's never going to change, and you may not want all these people to move in, and you may have a very simple answer to it, but there isn't a simple answer to it. And we are a growing city with lots of land. So we just have to tell the truth to the public right up front, that this is going to be, you need to budget it, and that's why we do it increments, because it's much easier to look at your budget and thinking, okay, I can plan, it's going to cost me this much for my water each year. And I think that's a true responsibility of our council to be upfront about that. Joe?
Again, I appreciate the community outreach, because the story you're going to tell is not simply drilling a few more holes and pumping some more water out. Obviously, the challenge as we go moving forward as far as infrastructure is going to be much more challenging on how we move with the cost. So I think it's important to get that message out so that the public clearly understands not just the paper water challenges, but the wet water challenges and the regulations and all that come into place. To me, I think that is critical so they understand where we're kind of going as we move forward. With that being said, the second piece is, I guess, I don't know, I wouldn't call it a downside, but one of the side effects of that is that it's going to take a little longer to get through the process with your advisory, and I can appreciate that. But I think doing the work up front, I think it'll pay off towards long-term. But with that being said, what I don't want to do is see us fall too far behind from a rate structure. So in the game, I don't have a problem making adjustments in '15 if something has to be done to carry us over to '16, because I'd rather see little than instead of one big one, you know, spike on that. So I'm just letting you know, that's kind of where I am as far as if you see there's going to be something, I'd rather do a little in-between, like a holding spot before it gets there, so there's not a big jump, if that happens to be the case, which I don't know at this time, but I don't have a problem with that.
That's consistent with what our thinking is, too.
Bill?
Bigger fingers than the slot will allow my fingers to slide through, sorry. I, too, I like the idea of the citizen input. I think, if my memory serves me correctly, back in 2006, 2007, 2008, when we did the last rate study, we had a big group, I'm looking at Larry over here, citizen involvement in that process as well. And I know that when the citizens' budget group was put together, there were several people who sat on that utility rate increase, were also seated on that committee, and that helped quite a bit to bring some of that information forward. And I know that there were a number of people on that committee that appreciated that. So I think that's a great idea. And kind of with that theory in mind, and listening to what you were describing with the citizen group, talking about operations and rates and whatnot, one of the things that I noted was absent. Now, it may be in the plan, it just didn't get mentioned, but there... Really, what does our economic development future look like with or without this water? And I think that becomes an important part that these folks need to understand. The mayor pointed out, you know, we're a big city, we've got a lot of land to grow. And we hear it a lot, people will say, "Well, just don't build the homes anymore." When APS wanted to put the lines through Australia, they said, "Just don't put any more homes," and that solves the problem. While that, in theory, is a great idea, it just isn't practical, especially to the people who own all the land that have, you know, developed it. So I think going forward, letting this group know what we've already approved, what's, you know, kind of what's out there, and I think that was part of it, in addressing why not adding any more homes is really not even a viable option. I think people need to hear that.
We need to maybe bring the economic development side aside.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm driving at.
And actually, is that, oh gee, would we like to see this store here, or wow, would we like this movie theater? Well, how come you can't get this? And how come you... It's all tied to density. It's all tied to bringing in, developing our city, and so we got to... And filling in, as Joe said, the infill. And so it's necessary. So somehow, I agree with him, if you can bring a little bit of that message in with it, I think that sort of helps build the story.
It does. And with that in mind, since the general plan committee, I think, is going to be ending about the time this may be starting, maybe a couple of folks that may want to peel over, I'm sure you're already thinking that.
Yeah. Were you sitting in at some of our meetings?
Yeah, he's a spy.
I think we have, there's been a couple of people. We're looking for people that are interested in the growth of this city, and what better place than the general plan committee for that type of individual? And also, other interested parties in the business and the residential community need to be on this committee to get all points of view.
Yeah. And my final comment. Don?
Dan.
Dan, sorry. I really appreciate your presentation. I am currently suffering through a economics class for my master's program, and I mean that literally. And the fact that you were actually able to give a presentation that didn't have conflicting viewpoints in it throughout the entire presentation, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You only have one minute.
Jerry? I thank you very much. It was a very interesting, informative presentation. I appreciate it. I think you brought a lot of good points out, is we don't want to give sticker shock. And I think that's the worst thing we can do, is all of a sudden, oh yeah, by the way, here's your giant increase. And I appreciate that, and I understand, I agree that, you know, if we need to put a little bit more ahead of time and then adjust it when we're ready, that's probably the best way to go, is just a gradual raise. And I also appreciate the citizens committee. I think that's very important to get the information out. And what you said about the residents, where we fall, where they fall in those tiers, the rate tiers, I think that's really important to really get that out. I know we put it in the focus and say, "Oh, you can control your water bill," but I think that's very important. There is one way, we can keep as level a water bill as possible, and that is conservation and get that information out. So I think having a citizens committee is very helpful. And it might be helpful as part of that, either through the education processes we're going through this, to basically, like we did with the tax bill, is explain the water bill. Because if you look at that, there are a lot of other taxes and fees...
Good idea, Sharon.
Because you look at that, and you just look at the bill, and you look at the taxes and fees, and there's other things in there as well, and sewer, you know, that's in there, it's all in there. It's not all water. So our water rates right now are still fairly reasonable compared, I don't know for sure, but they're not through the roof. At least, I know my bill's not when I start looking at it. So if we could maybe use that as part of the education process. And I look forward to your citizens committee, and if you could really get that information out to the people up in Australia, because I'm sure there's lots of people, when it comes out, you know, really kind of get that information out. There's a lot of people I know up there who'd be very interested, and I think that would help get the message out.
Well, I think it's because of the huge population over there, up there, and it's increasing, and they're the ones that have really probably the most concerns on water. So because it's a mountain, and they're building on a mountain, and you know what that means. So I think that'd be helpful. All right, did you have anything else?
No, thanks, Dan.
Okay. So again, I want to thank you, it was a great presentation, but I already got prepped on this, and I heard it was going to be, and it's everything you said it was. And I think we can have confidence that everything will be talked about and discussed, and the citizens will be aware from every step taken forth of what's going on and what they can expect. And that's all we can do, is to provide it and tell the truth, and sometimes people don't want to face the truth, but that's what Arizona's about. So there's a price for this. Okay? Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I'm going to ask. We're...
We have lawyer answers now.
Yeah. I think that we'd like to take a break before we take the next item. So how, 10-minute break?
Works for me.
All right, 10-minute break. Everybody all set? All right, let's go on with item 3.2, is to review and discuss the proposed special events ordinance. Sarah Chilton to present. Sarah?
Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Before I get started, I would like to introduce Byron Jones, who is sitting to my left here. I don't know, you probably all know him from the clerk's office, but he has been instrumental in getting this across the finish line. His work and his attention to detail and the research that he had done has resulted in the ordinance that we're bringing before you. I can't even imagine how much time he put into pulling all of this stuff together. It looks far different than when we first started, but we wouldn't be here without the work that he had put in. And I think I have much of my information that you're going to want to know about, he has pulled together for me. I think your questions will be geared towards the handouts that he handed out to you. And I would just like to thank him for all of his hard work and his efforts and his continued efforts.
Thank you, Byron.
Thank you.
We've been seeing you once in a while here in place of the city clerk, so you're kind of really getting into it now, aren't you?
Thank you.
You're really part of Goodyear now.
I know I didn't do this, and he was... He wasn't keen to come sit up here, but I wanted to personally acknowledge all of his efforts. So I guess I'll start by talking about the history of special events in the city of Goodyear. And historically, we have required special events permits for any sort of activity that involved the use of city property, that required some additional city permits, or required a special event liquor license or a liquor license for an extension of premises. So that would include, anytime you had a tent over a certain size, because it required a fire permit, you had to have a special events license. That would include a generator, if you had a generator, apparently generators require fire permits. So all of these events, you know, we're looking, we were having special event permits for. And there were some problems with this type of approach. First off, we did this for city property, and at the ballpark, the ballpark has been working, well, the ballpark staff, the Parks Department, Parks Department and the ballpark staff have been working on a more of a one-stop-shop approach. So to force people who were doing an event out at the ballpark to come in and pursue the special event permit on top of everything else was kind of inconsistent with the direction that the Parks people are going in and the efforts that they've been making to make the Goodyear ballpark sort of a venue of choice. And the other problem that we were seeing was it leads to overregulation. Do we really want to regulate something just because they have a, you know, a 400-foot tent out there? So that was, that were some of the problems that we were seeing with the, with how we were approaching it. So when this idea of a formal ordinance came up, we were looking to provide a legislative framework that promotes consistency in the process while eliminating unnecessary regulations, but still protecting the public's interests. Because you can't get around the fact that some special events involve activities that can inconvenience neighbors, neighboring residents, or businesses, put demands on city services, or create unusual risks to the public that we want to regulate. So the framework was to kind of eliminate what we didn't need to regulate, but still protect the city's interests and provide consistency in the regulatory process. Again, we're getting back to why regulate special events. They place unique demands on public resources, they can present public health and safety issues, they can create unreasonable adverse impacts to neighboring property owners, businesses, city residents, and the general public. That's what we're really looking to regulate with the special events ordinance, is that's what we're geared towards, those types of events. So it's with that framework, when Byron came over with this, and then we looked at all of the different ways that different cities were regulating special events, and we kind of sat down and hashed through, it was like, do we want this approach where it's by activity, or do we want a kind of a more broad approach, is what events create problems for the city, or the potential for problems? So the next few slides will provide a brief overview of the major components of the proposed ordinance. So the first point is, and the most critical part, is how we define special events. We are looking to you for, you know, direction on special events, the definition, but the way that we've proposed to define it, and if you wanted to look at it on the actual proposed ordinance, it's 26-1-2Q, but it would include gatherings, uses of events or activities held in whole or in part outdoors that do not exceed three consecutive days at which more than 50 people will attend. Let me see, I missed a word there. But it's held outside. So we're not regulating indoor events here. That'll be done with the zoning process. So we're looking at events that exceed 50 people. We picked 50, we looked at a lot of what some of the other cities were doing, some had 25 people. But 25 people didn't seem like they would generate any kind of externalities in terms of the public, in terms of, you know, in terms of demands on public services or anything like that. So that's why we picked a gathering of 50. Then there were other types of events that are held in whole or in part outside. We don't care if there's one person or a thousand people. They involve activities that the city should have some involvement in. And those are the gatherings that, regardless of size, present unique demands on public resources, they present public health and safety issues, and they could create unreasonable and adverse impacts to neighboring property owners and businesses, city residents, and the general public. So those are listed in the definition of special event. So if you could have one person, two people... of special event. So if you could have one person, two people, you know, 1,000 people, if it involves the closing or partial closing of a public street or right-of-way, or that restricts access to it, the city needs to be involved in it. So again, that's not dependent on how many people. If you've got an event that you want to block off a right-of-way, the city needs to know about it. That would involve your block parties, that type of event where they're closing off a city street. It could be a small parade. It, it could be anything that close off your sidewalk. So those types of events would still be subject to regulation. Events that, whether it's one person or 1,000, but they block or restrict access to the property of the others. We need to be involved in that. Or maybe we don't. Maybe we let them hash that out. But that might be something, you know, right now, we have that regulated. If you're going to interfere with somebody else's property rights, the city, you know, needs to know about that, if you're going to block that. Another one that we have is, again, one person or 1,000, if it involves use of fireworks, special effects, large open flames, such as bonfires, explosions, or other potentially dangerous displays or actions. Again, if you're shooting off, you know, fireworks in the city, we want to know and make sure that, you know, that the general public is protected. If you're using the property outdoors and it deviates from the legal zoning on the property, again, your neighbors are used to, you know, they know what you're entitled to use it for. So it'd be something the city should be involved. So that would be another special event. Use of outdoor amplified sound. If you're, again, it's always how it's going to impact the neighboring community. Do we have an interest in knowing? And, and you'll see why, why it's important. But we can impose conditions that address a lot of these issues if it's going to be a problem. Again, we also would regulate any event that involves the installation of mechanical amusement rides or temporary portable buildings for obvious reasons. You've got the safety issues. Or any sort of event that involves the display of exotic or non-domesticated animals. If you're bringing elephants down our streets, we want to know about it. Yeah, I go figure. And then if you have an outdoor event that requires a state-issue temporary extension of liquor license or a special event liquor license, we want to know about it. Because what you've done is you've extended your zoning. For many of you, you will remember the Buffalo Wild Wings. Did they have cage fighting out there? But they had that big event out in front of Lowe's. That, that would still be regulated for this. And then finally, we want to regulate parades separately. So those are the types of events that would be subject to regulations. You have outdoor events, there's limited outdoor events. Anything over, you know, 50 people or more than 50 people, we'd regulate. And then events that involve that list of activities. We have some exemptions. We would exempt First Amendment events because the process that we have is like a 30-day kind of advance notice. First Amendment activities, which are limited, they're, it's basically expressive and associative activity conducted on private property or public forums that's protected by the United States and Arizona constitutions. But it means solely that activity. So they can't do anything else, you know. But if they're out there protesting, you know, it's unreasonable to think that, most of these are spontaneous. When they had that one Senate bill that Governor Brewer vetoed, there was a spontaneous protest out there, right there on the public right-of-way. We don't let them, we've defined public forums not to include streets. So they can't block off our streets. If they want to block off our streets, they have to still go through and get a special event permit. So First Amendment events would be exempted. Certain school events would be exempted. And this is one of the areas that we were looking for some direction from council. We didn't want to have to regulate every high school athletic event that they had. We'll let them deal with that, you know, a political subdivision. But they could have certain kinds of events that we still have an interest in if it's in our city. So the school events that would still be regulated would be those that either block off our property, the streets or the right-of-way, that involve the partial closing or, or blockage of a private property of somebody else's, that involve the fireworks or the dangerous explosions or displays. The carnivals, if they have carnivals, the ones that involve mechanical rides, we'd still want to be involved in. The animals, the non-domesticated or exotic animals, or liquor license. Those are, those are the ones that currently would still be regulated. If you want to broaden, Sheri?
I'm sorry. I did want to, I have a question.
Thank you.
Have to wait till it turns on. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you right there. I was just questioning, when you said carnival, like I'm looking down here and got an email on today, the Estrella Mountain School Carnival. But if they don't bring rides or anything, if they just have the little booths and no, no explosions, no beer, no fireworks, then they're okay.
Exactly. Right. Yeah, the little fishing booths where you're
Yeah, the little, the toy things. They're okay with that, even though they'll have a lot of people there, as long as they're not blocking off our right-of-ways.
Exactly.
Okay.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
I'm using this.
Okay, but that's later. But you could ask me a question for that.
All right. You've got green in this, events held at Spring Training Complex.
Okay.
And the green says it's a ballpark event that would not require a permit. But what I'm concerned with, and it's the Goodyear Homeless Youth Connection Spring Carnival, and you just got through saying if they have rides, the city wants to be involved. So if they're having rides on ballpark property, I think the city needs to be involved.
Okay. The special event permit doesn't do any, doesn't have any independent meaning. All of these events still have to get all of the permits. But the special event committee and the special event process is a permit that says, here's your umbrella permit, and we're going to make sure, we're going to send it to fire, we're going to send it to police.
Right, yeah.
So we're going to send it, so they can get all, to traffic, so that they can get all of the other permits that they need. What the ballpark wanted to do with their one-stop-shopping concept is, first, they usually have contracts. They will ensure as part of the services that all of those other permits are obtained. And that's the reason you want to regulate anything with an amusement ride, is you want to make sure that those other permits are obtained.
Right.
We want to make sure that building safety is out there, that, you know, whoever needs to be looking at is out there.
Right.
So yes, we will not be issuing special event permits for events that are held at the ballpark. But that doesn't mean the ballpark's not going to perform the same services.
Okay. I'm just worried about the liability to the city.
Right.
Regardless of where the event is held. If it's held at Skyway Church, or if it's held on our ballpark, especially our ballpark, because it belongs to us, you know.
And they, at the ballpark, they'll have contracts for the use of that. They have all of that contract. So they were just saying, why are we making them go and do this? We're doing this for them.
Oh, I think it's a wonderful idea. But I just wanted to make sure that we were still involved with that. I was just watching the color coding.
Nope.
Sorry.
Nope. Because you got, you got far enough, because that's where we would, you're exactly right. We would no longer have special event permits for that.
Okay.
And that gets us to the city-sponsored events. If it's a city-sponsored event, we don't really need a, a special event permit. We, you know, we can make sure that we get all of the necessary permits that we need by going through, through the departments. So I've talked to Nathan, and Nathan's people are on board with this. So they know that if it's a city-sponsored event, they still have to go through the process, and they'll follow the same process, I believe. It's just they're not going to get a formal permit. But they, you know, they were going to, Byron has been working, I think, and committed to work with their staff. So they have the same process he follows, when he makes sure everybody has it. And that, but they'll just do it outside of the, the special event process. And of course, we've already talked about the events at the Goodyear Spring Training Complex.
Any other questions for me?
Okay, go ahead. So the ordinance also identifies responsibilities and authority for processing these applications. And under this proposed ordinance, as the way it's been historically, is that the city clerk is responsible for processing special event applications. But she does so with the assistance of a special event review committee. And that would consist of representatives from different areas of the operation in the city, code enforcement, planning and zoning, building, safety, fire, fire plan review, traffic operations, PD, the street, and risk management. So there would be a committee of people that receive a copy of the application, and they'll be asked to weigh in. And what typically happens is they will say, you know, no traffic safety issues implicated, no special permit for traffic, traffic required. Or they might say, look, they're going to need some law enforcement personnel managing, you know, traffic out there. So they'll make recommendations to the city clerk. But the city clerk asks, acts as kind of the funneling agent, you know. She'll take it all in and put all, you know, take everybody's comments. And based on those comments, she'll be the one, if they say, no, too dangerous, we can't, there's nothing we can do to mitigate the risk of harm of this. But she'll be the one who controls that process.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
And I'm just looking through this list, which I haven't looked at before.
Uh huh.
But I noticed that Star Point Wedding, Star Point Residential Club Event Lawn is in this. And they did a special event. Okay, is that the same way in Pebble Creek? Because I don't know. It's enclosed in HOA.
Which one are you looking?
I'm just looking at one of your listings. You have Star Point Wedding on, or you don't have pages numbers.
It's the last page.
Okay.
So I'm looking at that, so.
That would have been an outdoor event.
A special permit.
And it was more than 50, 50 people.
Okay, but what, just tell me what the, Pebble Creek, it's an enclosed community of 7,000 people. Tell me what the situation is. Do they get a special permit?
They would still, they would still get a special, a special event permit.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Only if it's outside.
If it's outside. If it's indoors, and then it's, you know, then it's a zoning issue. So, but this one was outdoors, it was more than 50 people. So it would have still, because what Byron did, because we thought you might have questions as to the impact of this proposed ordinance based on the last two years of permits. And so he put together this chart, and it shows you which ones would have been ballpark events, which we'd no longer have permits. It shows you which one would be city-sponsored events, which we would no longer have permits. And then based on the change in our approach, there were four events that we had been requiring special event permits, but they were indoors. So we're like, why are we requiring, and we did it because they got the, they had to get a special event permit license.
But they're happy when they hear this.
They should be, yes. Okay. So the special event review committee, one of the, one of the things that they have the authority to do, and based, the city clerk, based on the recommendation of special event review committee, is to impose conditions on the permit. So you might require law enforcement personnel to be hired for traffic control or for traffic safety. You might require parking attendants to be there. You might require temporary fencing or barricades. You might impose requirements for cleanup and require posting of bonds, first aid stations. If it's that kind of event, you might require that they be available. So there's a whole list in the ordinance of the types of things, but it's not limiting. It's kind of like examples of what we've seen in other ordinances. So that there would be that kind of authority to address the issues that might arise with a specific, special event. You might adjust the hours of operation because the noise is too, too, too great. And so you want to shut it down at, you know, maybe 10 o'clock as opposed to, they want to go to 11. So it's those types of things. Imposing does control measures when unpaid lots are used. But we had a slight problem one year with
Yes, with the air show.
Yeah. We were thinking about that. We put that one in special. So it's that type of thing that the special event review committee will look at, and they'll make those kinds of recommendations, and they may find their way in. We call them the special event permit There's one thing that we were, we did with this ordinance, it's a little different. We authorized the city manager, we provide authorization of the city manager to administratively adopt rules and regulations, policies and procedures for the issuance of permits and for the operation of the special events. We don't, you know, we don't need to be coming back to council and, you know, every time we want to make a small change in a rule or regulation, because we hadn't contemplated something and this new situation came up. And I've seen this happen a couple of times. And it, you know, it's very onerous. It's onerous for council. It's onerous because you're changing your code all of the time. So this would give the city manager the authorization to administratively adopt these rules. They would be posted. But for instance, in the first draft of the ordinance that Byron did, he had put in block party rules, because it's a special event that's kind of unique. We have block party rules, but we're like, well, if they change, you know, we don't have to come back and amend this ordinance. So, you know, we would be taking those to the city manager for approval and adoption. So it provides that kind of authorization. So we have the flexibility to make this work, so it's consistent, so it operates consistent kind of with the intent of what we're looking for here. The other thing we did was it would authorize the city's traffic engineer to prohibit or restrict parking of vehicles along a street, constituting a part of a route of a parade. We don't really have that right now. So we needed that authorization. We haven't had a lot of grades, but if we wanted to block parking, now we have the authorization to do that. Question?
Well, I'm going to wait until you get on down.
You can. Go ahead.
Well.
They pop in your head, and then I forget them. So I'd ask them.
No, keep going, because you'll talk about the appeals, I'm sure.
Okay. So there's a general process for the application process. And again, it's a completion of an application form that's provided by the city clerk. So the city clerk would have the, you know, the flexibility to amend that form if we're seeing we're not getting information that we need. And it requires the submission of all requested documentation. And, you know, you can't have a standard form, because it really depends on the events. They do different things. So, you know, they have different requirements. The timing is, we want 30 days advance notice. But we have, we have the ability, if the city clerk is able to process it reasonably within, within a lesser time, then, you know, she'll process it. And she has done so, you know, in the past. But some of these take a lot longer, depending on the nature of the events. So there is, you'll see later, there will be authority to deny an application that isn't given, that we didn't receive 30 days in advance, if we couldn't reasonably process it. The preliminary approval is, because even though we asked for 30 days, some of these will go out a year in advance. You know, your bigger events will go out in a year in advance. So you get an application, and you'll give a preliminary approval. There's provisions in the ordinance that would allow the city clerk, if it was, if the preliminary approval was way far in advance, we can ask him to certify that nothing has been changed about the event. And then we'll issue the final approval and a permit. It will be within seven calendar days prior to the scheduled event. That's how this is scheduled to set up. You'll see in the ordinance, there's a list of, because we didn't really have, and this is where we get to the consistency, we did not get standards for granting or denying. So this new ordinance kind of corrects that and provides the consistency. It tells you when you should deny it and when it should be approved. And that's listed in 26-2-1. So essentially, we're required to approve it if it hadn't been denied for one of the reasons for denial. And it won't violate, the approval won't violate any sort of other applicable law, ordinance, regulatory code. The applicants met all the conditions imposed during the application process. The expected attendance at the event will not exceed the lawful capacity of the venue site. If, you know, if it's going to be too overcrowded, that would be grounds for denying it. There's adequate parking. So it kind of gives you a checklist of what the review committee has to make a determination when they go If there's a requirement, like one of the reasons we would have for grounds for denying it is if it diverts public safety or other city employees for their normal duties. Sometimes you can have that, that sort of thing. So those would be kinds of grounds. And a lot of these will be tempered by some of the special event permit conditions. For instance, special event will not substantially interrupt the safe and orderly movement of pedestrian and vehicular traffic within the city. Well, one of the things you may be able to make that finding that it doesn't, because you're making them have law enforcement personnel there to, to manage that traffic control situation. So there's a list of things that we have to find, that, you know, if you can't make those, all of those findings, it will be denied. And then there's a list of things that are mandatory denials. And I have one on here that is a mandatory denial, but I think maybe we should talk about it, because it's a little harsh. If the application is incomplete, because I think we get incomplete applications.
Say that again?
If the application is incomplete, or they fail to provide any additional information, or if the application contains a false material misrepresentation. I don't mind the last one, if they, you know, if they make a false material misrepresentation on the application. But I was thinking about if they just, if it was incomplete and they failed to comply, to provide the additional information. Maybe it's the to provide the additional information, maybe it's the two-pronged as opposed to separate.
I would hope that we would make a call or notification, is there anything, I, I would just want to do, that's a little harsh, I think that if somebody sends an application that's not complete, they didn't give you exactly, it would be our good service to send them, either call them, or depending on, depending on the timeframe, because sometimes this is short timeframe.
So, I would change that, too, if it's incomplete and they fail to provide it when requested.
I mean, I believe, and we had to do this.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure that we, in the middle of all this, there's a thing called service, and, and, because when you go through this, sometimes.
That's my line.
That was your line?
Yep.
The service, I'm sorry, I took it away, and care. So, I just want to make sure that we're still showing, that we, that we really genuinely care about their events and that we'll do everything possible within, within our, our ordinance, so.
And Byron and the city clerk have done an amazing job in, you know, making sure that, you know, I don't think we've had to deny an application for special event, and, and we've gotten some on very, very short notice.
I think the only one we did was the, the cage. They wanted to do it, they, remember, they wanted to do it all weekend, and we said, "No, we're, it's too noisy and it's out there right by the road," and, and, and.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I think that's the only one I remember since I've been on council.
So, there's a list of, of, a list of things where we would mandatory deny it, you know, again, we have the mandatory denial if we don't receive it in time and the city staff is unable to process it. So, if we can't process it, we just have to deny it. If the applicant or promoter fails to comply with the requirements of the chapter or any of the special event conditions, permit conditions, we could deny it. Some of those conditions will happen, would have to happen prior to, or they fail to pay fees or provide insurance. We have one where if the required insurance coverage isn't available, because what we, one of the things we did was, we required at least five million dollars of insurance for fireworks. That's what we're told is what people are able to get, but that was one of the things that we did, is required that that, you know, that we had that fire insurance, and there's some other insurance requirements on city property. So, if they can't get the right insurance, that would be grounds for denial, but we have an out, so that the risk manager, who really should be making this decision, concludes that the lack of the, really, it's an occurrence policy, doesn't present an unreasonable risk of liability to the city. So, we've allowed, we, you know, we've provided a, a, a way out if, if they determine it's not a problem. So, again, as you can see, the, all of the conditions for approval and the conditions for denial are, are geared towards addressing the kinds of externalities that a special event will bring to a city, you know, that, you know, if it doesn't, if you can't do it without creating unreasonable adverse impacts on your neighboring property owners, businesses or city residents, then maybe it shouldn't be held, because it's, you know, it's too, it's too much of a burden. Or if it's unduly interfering with our ability to provide services, or if it creates an unreasonable risk of harm, because they haven't taken adequate measures for their, you know, elephant down our roadway. So, so, that's what they're geared for. There are two permissive categories of denial, and it's like if there's been a history of significant complaints generated for similar special events, then, you know, we can, we can deny it on that basis. Or if the applicant, promoter and/or sponsor had, in prior occasions, had permits and they damaged city property, or they have outstanding, and didn't pay for it, or have outstanding debts to the city, we don't have to keep doing business. So, we have that authority there. We went over the denials. Okay, and the revocations, I mean, most of this is if we issued a special event permit and then we discover that they lied about it, we could revoke it if it happened before the special event. And then we also have authority for the police chief or his to designate to close down a special event if there's violations of this, the chapters, the requirements here, or, and the violations create an unreasonable and, and adverse effect. So, you could have a minor violation, it wouldn't close down, but if it, he has to make both bindings. Mm-hmm. Yes, Jerry?
I was just wondering, would I also, would we, would we want to include the fire chief? Because don't you always hear about the fire chief closing people down? Sorry, Paul. I mean, it's always seems like the fire department is also, shouldn't, they have that authority as well?
Yep, good, good point, we'll, we'll make that change. The general requirements for a special event, you have to have a permit, you have to have all, you know, the ordinance requires that you have all of the required permits, license, certificates, requires you comply with your special event permit conditions, and that you have coverage, if you're doing anything that requires, you know, in here that identifies an insurance requirement, not too much there. There's specific, there's specific things that are required for events on city property. This kind of gets back to, I think, what council member Campbell's comments were, if it's on city property, they have to carry insurance, that will be, the amount of the insurance is going to be part of the regulatory requirements, so we'll work with risk management and then we'll bring that to the city manager for adoption. They have to have an agreement where they indemnify the city, if they're going to do events on the city property, we want to make sure that they're going to not only have insurance, but indemnify us if we're sued over what, over their actions. And then, of course, pay all of the fees for the use of the city fee, city facilities. Some, some of the parks won't have, like, if they were just putting a bouncy house out and not renting Ramada, they wouldn't have fees, but they have to pay the other fees. This is one that I hadn't seen before, but I found it in Houston's special event, and, you know, I don't think we want necessarily without our permission, the word City of Goodyear or the City of Goodyear logo promoting it unless they get the permission, written permission of the city manager, because it may not be a event we want to be linked to.
Because we actually saw that, I think, on the internet or something, with somebody was using it, our logo, so.
You're right, I think that's a, a good one. Okay, here's for getting into Wally's area. It provides appeals procedures, and you can appeal either the denial, you can appeal a condition that's imposed that you may think is too onerous, or you can appeal the revocation. The appeals are to the city manager, but it allows for delegation to the deputy if timing's an issue. And then the decisions are final, anything they would take after that would have to go to Superior Court. We did not bring the appeals to the city council, it, you know, it becomes political, it puts the council members in a, in a bad position of having to say no to constituents. And so, that was what our thinking was in terms of how we structured the appeals process.
Just out of curiosity, what do the other cities do? Do we know what the other cities do?
Actually, some of them appeal to, like, the person who manages, who, who actually manages the process, so in our case, it'd be the city clerk, it's like, well, okay, you can appeal to me, and I'm still going to tell you no, because it's my decision. So, they were kind of hitting this all over the place.
In Arizona, only, like, that's the only one I'm interested in.
In Arizona, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't go outside of Arizona for that. But we can look at that more. But the options, what you can have sometimes is a hearing officer, but that's costly, and it's time for, you know, the, it's, we don't have the timing, the time available. Usually, especially if you have a special event, you know, we want to, you know, we want to get it in as soon as possible to, you know, because once the date's gone, the date's gone. Did you have other questions, Wally?
Well, I just, my concern is, as a body, we're to, we're to adopt the policy.
Right.
That's our job.
Right.
So, we're putting out an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm assuming we've never had an ordinance.
No.
We've just kind of.
Muddled along.
Yeah, right.
Muddled.
Right. So, we're going to delegate the authority to change the ordinance to the city manager, and we're also going to give him the authority to be the final word on it.
No, no, the ordinance can't be changed without coming back. What we did was we delegated rulemaking authority.
We made the same thing?
No. No. It's, it, if you liken it to the federal system, you have, like, your Code of Federal Regulations, and that's the regulatory body that, that does that, it's not the, it's not Congress who does it.
Right.
So, Congress would enact a law, and, so the.
They write how it's implemented.
Right, so.
So, we're telling the city manager how to implement, he's going to figure out how to implement.
Right, and he can't do, he can't have rules that are inconsistent with this. So, if the ordinance says, "You deny it because of this," the rules would require it, but no, no changes to the ordinance can be made without coming back, too.
I just, I don't know, I just, and not that we've ever not approved someone, I just, I just want the public to know that, that they have a, they have another avenue to appeal it.
Right. And the city manager is not involved in the individual decision-making.
Yeah.
The city manager adopts rules and regulations, but.
Well, it's just like where we live, if we get a ticket, we get a ticket. We get, we never get out of tickets. We get our ticket, we have to go to this committee meeting, and if we don't like the committee meeting, then we get to appeal it. So, we appeal it to the general manager, and if we don't like the general managers, then we go to the board. So, I'm just saying, it's another layer. And we're just saying, if, if we say no, do we really need to go? Do we really need to have an appeal process? I mean, is it that important?
You do need to have an appeal process, because we still have to have due process rights, and so we have, we have to have some appeal process. And then, if they don't like that decision, which this, right now, we have the city manager's decision's final, they're, they would, they would take it to Superior Court.
Okay.
If they wanted to appeal.
Wow, I just don't want them to go to court.
Well, that's their choice.
Yeah, I know, but still, we're the one making the law.
If, yeah, but it's still their choice. And, and normally, when it goes to court, it's pretty.
They always have the right to Superior Court.
It's pretty extreme, I mean, to that point.
Their, their, what their violation would be is, you know, their grounds.
It's just the denial.
Their grounds are very limited at the Superior Court. Their grounds would be, they're not going to second guess the decision-makers here, but their grounds would be, have to be some due process violation, that, you know, we didn't handle it the right way, so.
Okay.
Code provides for violations, if you conduct a special event without a permit, if you violate any of the special event permit conditions, if you adva, oops, if you violate provisions of, this would be chapter twenty-six, any of the regulations that are there, or any other applicable laws, or if you make false statements when applying for special event permits. Those would all be violations under this chapter. The penalties, the first offense is between fifty and five hundred, the second would be five hundred and seven fifty, and the third would be seven fifty and fifteen hundred. One of the things that we've seen with our penalties in other, in other ordinances is penalties are less than, than, than maybe getting the permit or the fines. So, we may have to come back, but what we'll, you know, we'll do with, with the fifty and the five hundred is make the case as to why it needs to be higher. And so, we didn't want to have it so onerous that somebody who didn't get a special event permit for their block party was paying some horrendous, horrendous fee, because they didn't realize they needed a, a special event permit for their block party.
Yeah, I think that when we, we, when we do an ordinance like this, if somebody just goes to read this ordinance without talking, it's, they're going to say it's very harsh, and their mind quickly goes to the small events, but events that require some kind of permit. So, you know, I, this, the step we're making is, is a, is a bigger step for us here at Goodyear, so how we approach this, I, I think we, we need to keep in mind that people are responsible when they decide they want to give an event, and, and, and their liability does fall on their shoulders, but we need to give them good service at the same time. Again, I'm bringing that service back, so.
So, Manny, is one more question?
Uh huh.
So, regarding block parties?
Yes.
If you have a block party in a gated community, do you still have to get a permit?
Yes.
That was my question about HOAs.
Well, then, yeah, because that word is not out.
Okay, we, because what you're doing is, even though the special, even though it's, it's, even for private roads, they're still part of the public system, so I specifically asked this question, because I had the same, same question that council member Campbell had, the private roads, do we care? And they said, "Well, of course," like, felt like an idiot.
But we still send our fire department, because we still have our fire department to get through.
We still have police to have to get through.
Yeah.
I'm like, okay. But, yeah, I had that same question, but if the communities aren't aware of that, we'll let them know.
Yeah, I was going to say, if the ordinance is adopted, then we do need to do some community outreach.
Yep, I got a list of that for you.
All over this city.
Yes.
And all different communities, and they're, they're all the time.
Mm-hmm, the block parties?
Block parties. I've had three, and I didn't know I had to have a permit.
Is there a, is there a size limitation to the block party?
Yeah, I had.
I mean, is there a definition of block? Because, you know, a block can be just a small cul-de-sac that they close off and have some event.
Yeah.
That really doesn't, only obstructs those that live in the cul-de-sac, so.
Well, the regulations that we had, that were originally in our, in our ordinance were, and that we would adopt as, as regulations, as, you know, as rules and procedures, the block parties, you can't have a block party on a through street, because you can't block off if traffic has to get through. So, usually, they are usually limited to cul-de-sacs.
Culpes, yeah.
And then, one of the requirements, and Byron may, you know, he had drafted those, so he may have better recollection, but you had to have permission or agreement or consent from so many of the neighbors, because, again, you're blocking off everybody's access. And even then, they couldn't be in the roadways, because you had to have, you, you had to have the stuff on the sidewalks, because you had to have the ability for fire to turn around if you had any sort of emergency.
Okay.
I would say that we do permit block parties on, we do permit them on through, through streets. The, the, what, what streets does is they do offer the service of providing barricades for, for residents to request. One of the stipulations is that the barricades have to be manned, so that if, if there is an emergency, someone can take them out of the way and emergency, you know, vehicles can go through, but, but we do, we do allow them on through streets.
Okay, how would one know that by reading this ordinance?
You wouldn't know it by reading this ordinance, it would be the regulations, well, you would know it because it closes off a public street. So, by the definition of a special event, it includes any outdoor event that would block a city street or right of way.
So, when they, when they applied for this, would they be told that we would produce, you know, they would have these, I guess they're city.
Barricades.
Barricades.
Yeah. Cones, or who's going, do they give, y'all, y'all let us know?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I mean, part of the process is, we, we really don't have a lot of information available, so that's what, the, the types of things that we're going to be looking at after the ordinance is adopted, you know, brochures, applications, so that, that is, you know, through the, through getting the word out, we, we hope that, that people will be informed about the, what, what is available.
The clerk's office, although it's not part of the presentation materials I, I gave to you, they're, they have a, kind of a, a timeline of the different things that they're going to do. One of them is, you know, they're going to update the special event application to kind of correspond with the adoption of this ordinance, we'll start working on the, you know, some of the regulatory operating procedures. Where they have a, I guess they have a questionnaire, customer service satisfaction questionnaire, that they'll probably be distributing, this is on the clerk's list that she gave me, of the stuff that she has planned to do in conjunction with the adoption of this ordinance, to get some feedback from the people we've had special events for. We've talked about the public outreach, we would talk to the HOAs, and we would put something in InFocus, there's going to be a website, I think, and I, sorry, I don't know the technology terms, but where you could have special events to go in and get that information, that's what the clerk's been anticipating.
And I suggest you also include the community policing officers, because they are the ones that come out to our block watch groups and, and talk to us.
Good idea.
And they, they send out a citizens' watch every month that we distribute to all of our block watch folks, and that might get the word out, too, because they're the ones that are putting the block watches or the, the block parties together.
Mm-hmm. We were going to talk to some of the vendors that we've seen out there, so that they know that, that if somebody comes in and wants to rent something, that they may need a special event permit application. And then we were going to contact all of the applicants who we've done business with, so that they understand what they, what they have to do. But the community policing officers is, is a great idea. But the clerk does have a follow-up plan that would be, you know, kind of coincide with. with the adoption of this ordinance. Because it's not, you know, it's not just enough to adopt the ordinance. Bill?
Kind of on the same note, is there, we talk about block party, and when I think of block party, I always think of closing the road. But I also think of the front yard party, that three or four homes get together, and this is where, you know, my, my driveway is where the food is barbecued, and guy next door, blah, blah, blah. Is that considered a block party under this, where...
Not if they don't close off the road. If they block the road.
They're just blocking the road.
We used to have that. I lived in a cul-de-sac, and we, we would do that. And so it would be, you know, you have little stations set up. We did not block off the road. If we didn't block off the road, it wouldn't be considered a block party. But once they prohibit traffic from going through, it's going to be a...
So that'll be how we, how we'll define quote-unquote "block party." Okay. Second question...
Would you like a definition of block party in here? And include that in the special event?
I think that might, because, you know, we, we have this, if we're going to close the, you know, a block party is considered, obstruct traffic, et cetera. Because there may be opportunities for folks to throw together this block party and not have to make the trek down and fill out an application, et cetera.
Okay. So we'll define it as closing off the road, such as a block party, and then we'll define block party to be...
Also, what about the cul-de-sac, too? Do they need to get permission, or whatever?
That would be in the regulatory. That would be in the adoption, the rules that are adopted.
Yeah, but they would still block that road.
Right.
Cul-de-sac, they would still block it.
Yes.
But if they didn't block it, and they just put them around the cul-de-sac in their driveway, they'd...
Yeah, see, and we all kind of agree on that, because we have so many, we get in the middle of the road.
Yeah, okay. Bill?
The other, yeah, I know you're at the end of the presentation. This list that we got? Is this everything that did not, would not require a permit now under the new, everything including the colors, or...
No, just the color, colored ones. So before we go there, though, all I'd like to know, what we're looking for direction is the, should, the scope of events covered? Should special events include indoor events? I don't particularly think so. I don't know that we have. Okay.
I don't think so. If we haven't done it in the past, I don't think it's a good idea to interject now.
We have with the liquor license extension, but what we've picked up with that are some events up in Australia. What are those called?
Like cocktails and conversations?
Yeah, but they have to get a special event permit application.
Because of liquor.
Because of liquor. But there's, you know, that was the only one that we were picking up with that.
What about the, and I know we, we can't cover possibly everything, but the thing that comes to my mind is the, I'm going to say, the cage fighting, that somebody wants to put in their industrial place.
Inside?
Inside. That, you know, you kind of know I'm going with this? That we say blanket, we don't want to cover anything that happens indoors. Well, that means we're going to just close our eyes to everything that happens indoors.
But isn't that a zoning?
That's a zoning.
Well, it's a zoning issue.
It's a zoning issue if we're aware of it, so I guess if, and zoning requires some use permits. There's some provisions in the zoning code that requires some temporary use permits for those, I think, those types of events. But I'll coordinate with P and Z.
So, yeah, I would think that if, in this ordinance, if we at least have a reference back to that, instead of just saying, "If it's happening indoors, we don't, it doesn't apply," make sure that we've got some reference to cross-checking, that, that way we get it covered. Because I, I agree with you, I don't want to regulate cocktails and conversations, but I don't want cage fighting taking place either in, you know, a vacant industrial building, you know, for a weekend, so...
And we don't want to prohibit a wedding of 200 or 400 people inside a building?
Right.
And make them go get a permit either.
As long as it's appropriately zoned, yeah, exactly.
And I, and I do think that the zoning code will pick that up, but I will get back to you to, to let you know where that is. The other thought is, should the school exemption be broader? I think I, as I mentioned before, the listed items up there, if they're closing or obstructing the public streets or rights of way, blocking property of others, using fireworks or explosions, having amusement rides, or temporary portable buildings, or the display of exotic, or non-domiciled animals, if they do any of that, they still need a special event permit.
Good.
Very good. Joe?
I've just got a question on the one where mechanical amusement rides. If that's on school property, and it's enclosed on there, I'm just thinking this out from a legal standpoint. If, if they require a use permit from us, or special use permit, right, if something goes wrong on there, what's our library, our liability exposure, as opposed to if the school's required to ensure, since it's on their property and they are a separate public, or a separate legal entity, you know, of taking care of that? Do we assume more liability as a result of taking that on?
Yes, anything we touch, we end up being liable for. So if we touch it, if we touch it and we don't touch it the right way, we could have some, some liability. For instance, if we don't properly inspect it, and, you know, we, but that would happen anyway, because if they have a mechanical ride, amusement ride, it's already, there's a permit required already in the fire code or the building safety code. So it's already an obligation, it's just, do we require a special event?
And that's what I'm asking for. We, we can't keep it, if it's enclosed on a school property, make it their responsibility, we're still responsible, because it's in the city, even though it's on school property.
Yeah, the building code and the fire code still apply to, to school property. So they are still required to get, they'll still be required to get other permits for that. The big issue that I need some direction on is the waivers. Our current practice...
Back up one second. I know Joanne's not here, but the display of exotic or non-domesticated animals, but that would come into play for, like, farmers of...
Poor age.
4H and that type of stuff. Were they required to get a...
FFA at the high school.
Yeah. How would that affect?
I guess cows aren't domesticated. I don't think that's intended to that. I'll have a definition on domesticated.
You may need a definition on that, yes.
Like wildlife...
4H, Jews, coming.
I appreciate that, because that's...
Yeah, I don't think that's an area we want to be in.
Good memory, because she did bring that up.
Yeah, when they bring the snakes to the elementary school, does it require a special use permit?
Yeah, if it's...
No, it's inside.
No, I'm serious. Like, if they, if they bring the iguana there, and the kids can pet whatever the iguana.
I'm not sure we, I want to see, we can get a definition there. I'm not sure we want to get into that.
Well, we could take that out of the regulatory for the school events. But what else are they going to bring?
I mean, you see pot-bellied pigs and other things. I, I don't think we should be, and again, Joanne's not here, so I'm sure...
But they raise all kinds of animals.
You're doing a fine job representing them.
I'm hoping I can.
And they, and I didn't realize that they brought them to school, and carried them outside the school.
Well, we could take that one off, and not regulate that for schools. They can bring, you know...
Well, I know my granddaughter, they, she had pet a snake one day. I mean, they all, they bring all kinds of stuff in there, and they do that.
Yeah, if they bring, if they bring in an elephant, we got no grounds.
Yeah.
Well, elephant's a different thing. I don't know how you want to define it, but I'm thinking, I don't think we have to worry about that category.
Okay, I'll work on that. And, you know, there's two ways to do it, is to let schools do what they want with animals, or we can regulate it and try to define which animals, you know, we're looking at.
Let's see if we have a problem, then we can address it, but just not do it for now.
Take it out. I think, I think, take it out.
Okay.
I think their judgment, that, that's good judgment, I would hope on this. We don't need to be, we don't need to be over everybody.
What kind of animal was it?
All right. That's, that's the thing about ordinance, is you don't want to be, you know, in your mind, you don't want to be too restrictive, because it's like you're telling the citizen how to run their business, and how, it's better to run their business. And I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't, it appears that that's what we're doing, so...
So the next slide you have is, the big issue is our policy and waivers. Currently, the special event permit fee, the fee that is paid to the clerk's office, is not waivable, but we do waive other types of permit fees for 501(c)(3) corporations. And the waivers are paid from line item in the city clerk budget. So there's actually a budgeted line item, they might get, you know, $4,000 or $5,000 a year, and then they can waive permit fees. And the funds are moved from that line item in the city clerk's budget over to, say, the fire department, if it was their fees that are waived. We, I need some direction on a policy, as to who we want to waive, if we want to waive. And to help you with that, I am told Laney will put up Elmo for me. Hello, Laney?
It's me.
Okay. Oh, I did something. It's never been legal.
But we have this...
We got it.
We got it, so...
This one? Okay. Okay, so you have a copy of this chart. This number here represents the amount of fees for the 2013 fiscal year that were paid to the city clerk for special event permits. The next number is how much we, would we charge for fire and traffic and building safety, whatever other permits were required, for total, and this is the total fees for a special event. So in fiscal year 2012, 13, we collected $9,430 in fees, and we waived $3,850 in fees that year. Fiscal year 2014 to date is the light blue, so if you look at the middle line, we've collected $9,180, or that's how much the fee, fee costs were, and we waived $1,950. So I, I guess we just haven't had as many requests for fee waivers as, as we've had in the past.
Well, there's not that many nonprofits that...
Almost all of our events are by nonprofits.
Well, you said you only granted 16 waivers, and so that would be nonprofits. Because that's not a lot, when you look at 73. At the top right-hand of your slide.
Joe?
What's our current practice? What makes those up? Are they all nonprofits that we waive?
They're all nonprofits.
Are there any nonprofits that we have not waived fees?
Not that I know of.
There's only been one circumstance where we didn't give a fee waiver, and that was because it was a third party wanting to raise funds for a nonprofit.
Yeah, for somebody else, for somebody, yeah, I agree.
So our current criteria is if it's a nonprofit 501(c)(3), we waive the fees?
Right, if they're the sponsor or promoter, if they're putting on the event. And if that's a good, we'll put in a waiver policy in there. The current, the draft does not include anything, but we needed that direction.
Well, so this is what you've done for just nonprofits?
Mm-hmm.
Or everybody?
Well, it shows, the, the first three columns are basically the total fees for all of the events. So for instance, in 12, 13, the fees for special events that were held in fiscal year 12 to 13 was $9,430.
Got it.
And we waived $3,850.
Got it.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. If we're waiving it for nonprofits, and it will probably get very few now with the changes for like the schools and everything, but would we want to include the schools in there, too? Because I know the schools right now, their budgets are so tight right now. I don't think there's going to be very many after we, you're not going to have many with those, those requirements that you have listed there anymore, but would that be something we could maybe add? You know, add the schools to the charter?
And we'll use our facilities?
Well, no, not if they're using, I guess it's if the, like if they're doing something for a drive, at the fair, you know.
You, we're actually funding it out of a line item in the, in the budget, so, I mean, it's, you know, it's really up to you, and it, and it depends on, you know, how much, you know, we're funding, because we take it from one pot, it goes into the city clerk's, you know, budget, and then, and then we're taking it over to fire, because they're usually the permits that are waived. Some will be traffic, but primarily, it's the fire, fire fees that are being waived, so...
And that's not a gift issue, waiving fees for schools?
Well, no. It would not be a gift issue for waiving fees for schools, because it's not a private entity.
How many events?
Might be a gift issue for waiving fees.
Under the new waiver, they're all going to be waived, they're all, not going to need it anyway now, but it'd just be maybe a couple, if any.
What do you mean, what new waiver?
Well, the way they, they redrafted the ordinance, most of the school events won't need it anyway. So there's just a few that will, depending on their activity.
Well, we still, do we charge them to use the ballpark for their graduation, or do we give it to them free?
I don't know what our policy is.
I'm sure that they charge for it.
That'd be different.
Okay, so we charge for that.
I'm thinking like their little school carnivals, and stuff like that.
And we want to continue that.
Yeah, well, we need to, because that's a source of revenue for us. And mostly, when they do their school carnivals, they do them on their, their own location.
That's what I was kind of thinking, yeah.
Yeah, they, they, because I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know. But we could be opening Pandora's Box, though.
That's why I don't...
I mean, I love, for the 501(c)(3)'s, that's very generous of us to help them, but they, you know, but schools, that's another thing.
We could see how many we get, because under the new policy, we may not get a lot.
I guess I would like to, I would like to have, I would like to have more information.
Yeah, me, too.
Before we say a or nay on that.
We may not get very many.
On schools.
On schools.
On schools? Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the current practice. Maybe take a look, seeing how much it affects the schools.
Yeah, we may not get any, because...
You might, you might be right.
I'll, Byron will go back and look at the, the list of these events, and try to determine whether they would still need a, because I think, you know, they may need, there's Australia Mountain School Spring Carnival, and it looks like it would still require a permit, because they must have done something.
No, they don't have any rights yet. It's a little fishy game. I mean, that's what I'm thinking of.
Well, just because it's over 50 people.
No.
But, and...
But don't they usually have, don't they usually have an indoor and outdoor?
Yeah.
At least those festivals that I've gone up to, and so how do you, I mean, basically, a lot of the, it's in store, so it's half and half.
In their cafeteria?
Yeah, it's half and half, so why?
Wander around elsewhere.
How do the charters fall into that as well?
They would be considered public schools. If we had an exemption for public schools, we'd have to exempt them for charter schools.
I just, thinking about it, though, I don't know if we're going to get that many, because the way you've redrafted it.
I don't think so.
Very few of them are going to have any motorized rides, explosives, or what was the other, you know?
We had a Millennium Homecoming Parade, and it would still qualify. I don't think, I don't think West Star Elementary School Carnival, or the Australia Mountain Spring Carnival would qualify. I mean, we, we didn't mark them off, but I think...
Yeah, I've been to those. I don't see anything that fits under what your criteria is now.
Most of the school events are at the, at the ballpark, if, you know, we have a...
Is it on a case-to-case basis, on application? I mean, can we, since there aren't that many, is that...
We had a bonfire at Desert Edge that would still qualify.
But that was on theirs? That was on school property?
Was on school property, but even under the current regulation, if they have a bonfire, we don't require them to have a bonfire.
Oh, they need to know, oh, yes.
Right, right. So I think there's probably only two of these events that were schools that would still require permits. So do you want, for two events, do you really want to waive?
No, I don't think it's a problem.
No.
There's only two.
So just leave the waiver to the 501(c)(3)'s?
And I know, just adding on that, the, the Millennium Parade, we don't charge, normally with like a parade, there's a traffic control permitting process, and there's a fee for, for that, but we, we haven't charged that fee for the, for that particular parade, because the traffic control is provided by Goodyear police officers, and I believe the traffic engineer has determined that if the, if Goodyear PD is involved, then they don't have to go through the, the process, the, the traffic control process.
Are they hired?
Is that right?
Is Goodyear PD hired for that event?
I believe they, no, I think it's like the community, they, they...
Volunteer for it?
Yeah.
Maybe they're resource officers?
Yeah, I don't know.
Is that right?
Mayor members of the council, there has been some school parades that were like a very quick, like 10-minute closure.
They don't go very far.
Yeah, very quick 10-minute closure, and then the school resource officer for that school would just provide that closure for the parade, so they wouldn't need the off-duty officer for a very quick one.
Because I think Millennium, their parade goes from that West, Westview School, right around, and into the driveway near the stadium.
That's what I was saying, the resource officer just manages traffic control there, and they're already out there. So...
Yeah, let's, let's not, let's not get in.
Okay, so just leave that.
Let's let them have their parade.
Okay. And then, what Byron did with that chart, this is kind of a pie chart that shows all of those events that you had, and of all of the special events we've had in the last couple of years, 28% would be no longer required, and I think it's a little more, because I think those two school events should have been added in there, but, so 28 to 30% of the events that had been required to obtain a special event permit would not be required to have a special event permit, and the breakdown would be events held at the ballpark, where you've got that one-stop-shopping concept, or our personal events, the city-sponsored events, or those indoor events, I think, and the school events that would no longer qualify.
Any other comments, questions? Okay.
So, my direction is just leave the waiver policy as is? Okay.
Yes.
The only question I have is offline, who can I answer? Who should I see? You or Byron?
About.
About this list? Just for some clarity. I don't want to do it now.
Probably Byron about the, the list, this, this list here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I got one more.
Uh-huh.
When, when this is all done, and our app is up, and our, this might be for Brian, and our website's up, are, if I want to permit, can I get on, will I, is there something I'll be able to get on my app and get on, or get on my website and do it all online?
Maybe someday.
Sorry.
Thank you for your cheer.
Whoopsa!
Well, currently, special event applications can be submitted online. It's, um... Yeah, I mean, sorry. Yeah, they, they can be submitted online, and that's, that will continue. We're, we're going to be redesigning, you know, the whole, the whole form, because it's not very, it doesn't give us a lot of information, so we're going to be looking at all that.
The, the problem, but the problem that I see, though, with the, you can do the application, but it's all of the other information that you have to submit.
Supporting documents.
So, if you have to have a site plan, you're going to have to upload it and send it that way, so I, you know, sometimes it's difficult to do that online because of the other seminal requirements that you have. You might have to have a parking plan, depending on what type of event, event it is. So, we'll work with IT, maybe there's a way that there's an easy upload feature of it, where...
Like you upload a resume or something.
Right, like we do, yeah, for, for the, for, yeah, people upload their resumes, so we'll work with IT and C, but the application part is easy, it's getting the other information that may be more difficult.
Okay. Done? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, Byron, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, the third item is to provide, provide an update on the city's pavement management program. Luke El, Luke Albert, city traffic engineer, to present, and he also has a guest with him, and would you please introduce?
Tough act to follow, Luke.
He's dealing with some mediation.
Keep us engaged, man.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, mayor members of the council. Tonight, we're pleased to provide an update on the city's pavement management program, and we've...
Can you speak up?
You're going to have to take that mic, I tell you, take it out. No, the little thing just comes out. Put it right up to your mouth, because that, that way, that's great.
Good evening, mayor members of the council. Tonight, we're pleased to provide an update on the city's pavement management program, and we've been working with Applied Pavement Technologies for the past few months on evaluation of, of this program, and I've invited Mark Gardner up here tonight for Applied Pavement Technologies to provide an update on the status of his evaluation, so now I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, you're welcome, Mark.
All right, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to speak tonight, and I'm glad you gave me an opportunity. We're going to provide a real quick overview here tonight, a review of the City of Goodyear pavement management program, pavement management program objectives, based on our recent discussions with city engineering and our review of current roadway conditions in the city. Using the city's pavement management system, we've been looking at current roadway conditions, compared those to proposed program objectives, and we're actually moving towards a future program, making greater use of more cost-effective pavement preservation techniques. So, that's kind of the, the objective, the goal here is to move towards a program that will use more efficiently the funds that you have available for management of your program, of your pavements. Apptech was hired by engineering to evaluate city pavement management system and provide guidance on pavement preservation. Thus far, we've delivered, or provided input on the fiscal year 13-14 program. We've provided some recommendations on treatment strategies, and we've reviewed, or in the process of reviewing the pavement management system. We're really wanting to make sure that that pavement management system is giving you the kind of information, or giving engineering the kind of information they need to make recommendations for a wise system. What we're going to talk about tonight is, we're going to provide a little bit of background on pavement management, talk about treatment strategies and how pavements perform, why it's important, and how that leads to lifecycle costs, why things cost as much as they do. We'd like to then take a quick look at the current conditions of the City of Goodyear roads, look at the evaluation recommendations of the FY 13-14 program that engineering has put in front of you, and then review the next steps in the project. All this is going to lead towards a more preservation-focused program. Looking at pavement performance and the way that treatments are applied in that performance cycle, the graph on the left, or the image on the left, shows a typical pavement performance, kind of a curve, if you will. Approximately 75% of a pavement's life, it's analogous, quite analogous, to what you might consider when you buy a car. For a while, a car works just wonderfully. You change your oil in it, you add gas, you add air to the tires, but in general, it's really good. Then it starts dropping off, and you have to do more expensive treatments and more expensive repairs to it. In pavements, about the first 75% of a pavement's life, it experiences about a 40% drop in its condition. In the next 12% of its life, it will experience another 40% drop in condition. And why that's important is in that first 40% drop in condition, treatments that you would apply cost about a dollar, a square yard, in, in respect to the next 40% drop, those treatments cost four to five times more. And that's very important to remember as we talk about the program objectives here and why we want to use more pavement preservation-oriented program, as opposed to fixing, letting things decline to a, to well beyond into that second 12% of their life, and spend that extra four to five times cost. We typically talk about pavement condition using what's called pavement condition index. That colored chart on the right shows pavement condition index and the typical treatment strategies that are appropriate for different pavement conditions. So, a pavement that's in a 70 to 100, if we put that on a 0 to 100 scale, a pavement that's in a 70 to 100 condition is going to only require preservation, preventative maintenance treatments. When you're in that next thing down, a 50 to a 70, you're generally looking at thin overlays, more expensive treatment. When you're at 25 to 50, you've gotten down into poor condition, you're going to use thicker overlays. Now, you're starting to talk about rehabilitation and restorative practices. These are much more expensive. So, what we're really looking at here is if we can maintain that line at the top, that horizontal line, when we have a brand-new pavement, we want to maintain, using preservation treatments, a long period, that 75% of life, before that pavement branches over and starts dropping into the accelerated deterioration. This is showing the same thing in a slightly different way. You're looking at a graph of pavement condition versus time. When a pavement's in relatively good condition, you're going to use routine maintenance or preventive maintenance treatments. After it's had a chance to deteriorate for a while, you're going to use resurfacing or reconstruction treatments. In the middle, I'll call your attention to a little bitty thing that doesn't stand out very much, but it says defer action. Once it's gotten to the point where it's beyond what might be considered appropriate for preventive maintenance, you're almost wasting money. If you put a preventive maintenance on a pavement that's too far gone, you're wasting money. If you put a resurfacing or restorative treatment on a pavement that's in too good a condition, you're wasting money. So, a lot of times, once it hits that accelerated decline, you generally would defer action. What we would like to do is not get to that point. What we'd like to do is maintain that pavement using preservation treatments or preventive maintenance, so that it never gets to that period of accelerated decline. That's what we're working towards a program that will do. If you look at a comparison, I'll just try and hit this very quickly, if you look at a comparison of treatment strategies, if typically, what somebody will look at is an overlay strategy. They let the pavement decline down to where it gets pretty bad, then they'll come in and mill to take out the roughness, put an overlay on it, make it smooth again. But in doing so, you're spending $15 to $20 a square yard. You've let it decline for a long time, you're going to buy another 12 or 15 years for that overlay, but it's going to cost you 12 to 15, uh, sorry, $15 to $20 a square yard for milling and overlay. If we compare that to a pavement preservation strategy, we want to put smaller effect treatments on earlier in the pavement's life. They cost one to four times less, but you put them more frequently. I know, more frequently, but they go on much more quickly with a lot less interruption to the driving public. And in doing so, they maintain the pavement condition in a better condition, in a safer condition, for a longer period of time. The preservation approach maintains the roadway in a better condition for a longer period of time at a lower lifecycle cost. Lot of information on this slide. I apologize for a lot of information on this slide. What I will call your attention to, the third or fourth purple bar down, if you're looking at the lifecycle cost on the purple bars, it's the hot-in-place recycle line. You're going to, you've already seen a lot of hot-in-place recycles planned for your FY 13-14 program. We'll come back to that. That's a more expensive restorative treatment, rehabilitative treatment, but they are appropriate when the roadway condition requires it. You have to get that condition up to a point where preservation-related treatments are appropriate. What you can see in the table at the top is how much cheaper in lifecycle cost a series of less expensive treatments is than one or two more expensive treatments. The reason is, they're a lot less than one to five times cheaper. The slurry seal, at a $1.50 a square yard, has a lifecycle cost of about $158 for this example lane mile of roadway. Compared on the other end of the spectrum to a mill and inlay, there, we're only going to do a mill and inlay twice, but because of the cost per square yard, it's $1,000. So, we have almost 10 times in terms of lifecycle cost for this lane mile of pavement. This is really the case for pavement preservation. This shows why it's fundamentally a better, more efficient process than a worst-first, overlay it, and then wait for it to deteriorate till it needs an overlay again. All right, this is the current condition of your roadways. Using the information available in the city's pavement management system, we've presented the current condition by pavement class, by type of road, arterial, collector, residential, and rural, in those color charts. So, green, 70 to 100, those are the ones that are in really good shape. Those are the ones that are appropriate for preservation treatments. Blue, those are the ones that are at risk, between 50 and 70. Those are the ones that would typically use a thin overlay, or we might get by with a hefty preservation treatment, like a microsurface. If you look at your arterial roadways, and when we come in and do those, those pavements that are already in the FY 13-14 program, we're going to move a lot of those blue ones that are in the 50 to 55 PCI range right now into the green zone. So, arterials are going to be in pretty good shape after this FY 13-14 program. We want to preserve them in that good shape. Those are where a lot of our traffic are. Collector roadways, you have a lot in the 50 to 70 range, for about, I guess our average there is about a 70, I think, 65 to 70, I can't remember, the next slide will show it. Residential, we've got about even at 42, 43% in the 50 to 100 range, and then rurals were kind of all over the place. We got a, a smattering all the way across. Okay, advance. There we go.
Quick question, one more.
Ah, yes.
Residential?
Yes.
How do you, have you inventoried all of those pieces on residential? What I mean by that is, I know in, in some of the neighborhoods, and even where I am, you've got maybe one-inch, two-inch gaps, you know, cracks in the road. At what point, when it gets to, gets to that, is that past the point when you've got one, two-inch cracks in the road? Is that past the point of that 70%? Is that down at the, the 50?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Yes, it will get it, it will get that number down some. So, we went out and drove, we've, we've been out driving the roads a lot, and here, in, in the last, yesterday and then previously while I was here, and what I saw was a lot of residential streets that are structurally in very good condition, but they do have some cracking on them. When you get that cracking, you need to keep it sealed. Most of what I've seen in there is an absorptive aggregate problem. It was a material problem, where the aggregate itself is absorbing the asphalt, and it's the liquid asphalt, and it's causing the liquid, it's causing the pavement to shrink, and that's what's causing those cracks. It's not a structural problem, it's a shrinkage, I mean, it's a shrinkage problem. It's the aggregate is absorbing the asphalt, and it's causing the pavement to shrink, and that's why you see those cracks open up. And that's why when they seal them, they open up again. That's going to continue to be a problem until you cover it up, basically, until you mill it and cover it up, and get it to the point where it's not exposed and that absorptive aggregate is not.
Well, I continue the spread, though, I mean, some of them are, you know, inch, inch wide, you've got, you can see, and all the way down there, there's a crack. Are they just going to keep getting wider and wider and damaging the road when rain gets in there and causes that to...
Over time, as the city...
What, rain? Wait a minute.
Well, we do get it every once in a while.
You are blessed, you are blessed in that if you had more rain, what I saw was if you had more rain, you'd have a bigger problem with pavements, because water would be getting into those cracks, would be saturating the subgrade and the base materials, and it would be accelerating the deterioration. So, because of that, you're able to, you're surviving a lot of that that some can't.
But what I'm hearing from, from you, though, is if, even if you put the seal there to fill the cracks, it's only going to be a short-term issue, because it's still going to shrink, and the cracks are still coming back.
Oh, you talk a seal, talk to me, you talking slurry?
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking...
He's saying, if you, if you just seal the crack...
Yes.
Then, yes, it's going to continue to widen. If, on the other hand, you seal the crack and then cover it, then it will prevent that absorption and that absorption, so that it won't open up as quickly, but it will probably still open up over time.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, Sherry, go ahead.
Because that's exactly what they did, because we live in totally different areas of Goodyear, and we had cracks that were starting to get about this big, at least, you could put your keys in there, and they came and they sealed them, and probably with, it hasn't even been six months, they've opened it right back up, and it's, it's back to where it was. You can't, I mean, you can see the lines where it's been sealed, but it's the same thing. Where does that put that on the green? I feel like I'm, it's a terrorism scale, the green, blue, orange, where does that fall in there?
Those are actually weighted, so, without getting too deep into the boring engineering stuff, the, each one of those distresses has a distress rating and a weighting factor that goes into the calculation of those numbers. But there's a best practice involved for crack sealing. Any crack that's narrower than about a quarter or three-eighths of an inch, crack sealant material can't get down into it, so it's not effective to crack seal it. You actually have to let it open up enough so that crack sealant material can penetrate, so that it can bond to the side, so that it can hold it. When it gets too wide, it becomes too wide for crack sealing, and now it's best practice not to do that, you actually have to cut it out and patch it.
I mean, these are like the whole streets.
You have to cut it out and...
I mean, this is like the whole street.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the more expensive.
That is very expensive, and once you cut it out and patch it, then you cover it with a microsurface, with a slurry, with a thin overlay, you cover it with something, so that it protects that patch, and also is more aesthetic.
Yeah, because we, like, our whole neighborhood is like that.
You have a lot of, and I, if I'm, I don't know if we drove your neighborhood today.
Up in Straya.
Uh, yeah, we did drive your neighborhood today, and so you have a lot of longitudinal and transverse cracking. Now, there's narrow cracks, there's small cracks, and those, and they come out. Crack sealing is a very good, both preservation treatment and pre-treatment for rehabilitation. Excellent treatment for both. And when used as a preservation treatment, sometimes you get a public backlash, because when you go out and seal the cracks, they're a lot more visually obvious. But it's a necessary treatment. It's good, it closes those cracks up, it makes them more obvious, and people complain, "Oh, my God, look at all the cracking." It makes them more obvious, and people complain, "Oh, my God, look at all the cracking." But with that, you've sealed it. You've done something to preserve the pavement. Now, when they get that wide, unfortunately, the, the thing that has to be done is almost you have to patch them, because it's too wide for crack sealing. There's, you can't do it. Unfortunately, there's a materials problem there, too, that will need to be addressed eventually.
So, we keep saying that, so, so when, when a community opens, and they put, the developer pays for the street, is that correct? Puts the street in, are we just saying the composite that they're using, that they're putting down, is not the quality it should be?
The material specifications should catch the fact that that's an absorptive aggregate and not be accepted, because you know, there's, I mean, material specifications will catch that that's an absorptive aggregate.
Okay, so, I didn't quite understand that you're lingo there.
Sorry.
So, I just wanted, so the, so the street gets put in, and our inspectors go out and look at it. So, is this the inadequacy of the knowledge our inspectors and the city have on the streets when they're looking at to determine whether that street has the correct composite or not?
The city, at this time, has a thorough program to evaluate the specifications of materials that are put in those streets in the city. The roads y'all are talking about, that were maybe, you know, 10, 20 years ago, it's, it, the process was probably different that time, but we certainly have a thorough process now, where we review the, the material specifications, we compare them to the standards. Any asphalt that shows up in the city is off of our approved asphalt mix list. So, that shouldn't, should not be happening, certainly, in, in recent years. I'll say that for sure.
Well, I don't know. You ride your bikes around Pebble Creek, and I just have to use what I have, but they did our street, and when they finished our street, it had a lot of rocks in it. I mean, it looks so different than everybody else's, and it hasn't held up any better. And I guess the part of it for a novice like us is, is that we, we say that they go out and they, am I correct, am I, they slurry the streets, the cracks? And so, all we see is this black line going through your streets all over, and it doesn't give the impression that they've done anything. I understand that...
The crack comes back.
Yeah, and the crack comes back. So, it's kind of, is it designed so this is a new industry, so you constantly have to do this over? I just don't understand, in this day and age, with everything that's been invented, that we can't find a composite that lasts a little bit longer than what these are? Because you're in a house a year, and you go out there, and your street has cracks in it, you kind of wonder, this has just been a year, you know? So, I guess that's, I guess there isn't anything out in the industry that, unless you pay an arm and a leg.
There is, but if you're putting, if you're putting material on top of a material that's shrinking, it will shrink, too.
Yeah.
The only way you remove, the only way you fix a problem with a, I mean, if, let me see, how can I, how can I say this? The only way you fix a problem where the underlayment is shrinking is by removing the underlayment and replacing it.
So, we...
And to go through some of your neighborhoods with rollback curbs, and the manhole covers and everything else in there, and remove all the pavement and replace it, yes, you could put all of that down with new materials, and you wouldn't have that problem, but the impact to the neighborhoods, and, I mean, you can imagine what the impact would be like to your neighborhoods to go and mill out all the asphalt and replace it.
So, I'm just going back to, do our qualifications for what type of substance has we put on the, on the streets isn't good enough? Are we do, you know, is it, is that we're not?
I think what Luke said was, in the past, it may have been that way. Today, it's not. So, things that are being built today...
Are we sure today it's not?
For how long, though?
Because, I mean, I guess that's my question. I don't know how we gauge that. I don't know how is a city that we're, know that we're getting what, the worth of what we're paying for. That's all. I, we'll get too bound up in this conversation too long, and I can get this information later. It's out there that I...
It's a, it's a, it's a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a problem that, that, that you're dealing with. It's, it's a legacy problem, if you will. Pavements stay down for a long time, and you have to deal with those materials for a very long time. If you were rebuilding it today, you wouldn't have that problem. Your specifications would prevent that problem. Now, you have to come up with a way. It's unsightly, and it's annoying, but you're actually, your pavements are in pretty good shape.
Okay.
When I, I mean, as I look around, I, I know, when I say that, people roll their eyes. Your pavement's in pretty good shape, because there's not much structurally wrong with them. There's some, there's some, there's some aggregate raveling and weathering at the surface, it makes it kind of rough at the surface, and you've got some cracking like that. But structurally, they're in good shape, and that's a good thing.
Okay.
Because you don't have to rebuild structure. What you're dealing with now is functional performance, and the functionally, there's some unsightly stuff, there's some wider cracks that you have to, that the city is working to address.
Bill?
Getting back to this chart, the, the percentage of rural roads that we have, what is, what are we defining as rural? Do you have, are we talking to, like, all the streets down in Mobile, or are we talking about some of the stuff outside of, I mean, give me some frame of reference, because 40% of those roads, if we've only got 10 roads, that means four of them. So, the numbers can be deceiving.
Mayor, Lower Councilor Step, it's primarily the roads that are completely undeveloped, with like, that are still just like an old Tulane County chip seal road. So, like, the roads out west, a lot of like the, you know, Lower Buckeye, or Citrus, or some of those roads out west in, in this part of Goodyear. And then, if you go down, like, into the Rainbow Valley area, those roads in that area, if you go up northwest, like, in the area, Citrus, north of I-10, McDowell, the, the, well, that's changing now, but some of the undeveloped pieces of McDowell up there, you know, those roads, so they just, primarily, just the undeveloped Tulane County chip seal roads is primarily what we're referring to there.
Okay, so, as we're moving forward, when we're talking about improving the functionality, if you will, or improving the PCI these, are we including those rural roads in our plan? Or are we going to focus on the residential collector and arterial? This year, we're collecting on our, focusing on arterials. So, in the years, in the future, are we looking at collectors and residentials and not as much emphasis in the rural? Is that, is that a good assumption?
The program, as I understand it, I don't know if you want me to take this one or not, the program, as I understand it, focuses on all classifications of the roads. In the past number of years, because of financial constraints, the city has focused more attention on residential, arterial, and collector, with a high degree of preference on the arterial and collector, and then residential with very little consideration for rural roads. But as, as we've been discussing, as I've been discussing with the gentleman in, in engineering, the program, as it moves forward, will attempt to move all of these roadway classifications up to a level that can be maintained with more preservation approaches. Because roadways are made with natural materials, because they degrade over time, they don't last forever. So, it is important to think that you can, you can make a car last a long time by changing the oil, but eventually, it's going to deteriorate to the point where you've got to buy a new one. Same thing happens with roads. They're natural materials, they break down over time. But, in answer to your question, all of the roadway classifications. Rural, we are working on putting rurals back into the mix.
Good.
But because they've been neglected over a period of time, it may be a slow road, pardon the pun, but it may be a slow road to get them back. Moving on, this is the pavement performance curve. I just thought I'd throw up there the kind of averages, and that's averaged by area, the averages and where it sits on that curve. Arterials and collectors, their averages are about 70. The good news is, those are the ones that are carrying most of your traffic. They're also right at the bottom, but they're still in that green zone where you can maintain them with preservation. We're actually going to move a lot of those up with the FY13-14 program, so you're going to see that move up. Residential's are 65, in general, on average by area. Again, those are ones, they're down there, they're at risk, but they are in an area where they can be maintained and brought up, so there's not an overabundance of work there. The rurals are suffering a little bit worse, as you know, and the net, so, in general, the network's in fair to good condition. It's cresting that breakpoint. It's getting to that point where more expensive treatments. So, there's probably going to be a few years, we're going to have to invest some money into getting the network back up. If we are, if we're, if we're confident in this program, we're going to have to invest some money into it to get the network back up to a place where preservation treatments will maintain it in that condition. This is a 2014 preservation program list. I think you've seen this. It's really focusing on roads that have increased demand and currently at a lower PCI values. All three of these are in the mid-50s. Hot-in-place recycle treatments are being, and actually, it's rubberized hot-in-place recycle treatments are being programmed for these. There's also significant amount of crack sealing. About 10% of the program is crack sealing, which they've been actively working on right now, which I'm really glad to see, because using crack sealing as a treatment, as a preservation treatment, in addition to a pre-treatment, is very healthy. So, these, those roads that we have programmed there are, are going to deteriorate in the mid-50s to just under, just under 60. They're going to deteriorate more quickly now, if we don't do something about them. This is a sound, this will bring those major roadways up into a condition where they'll be preserved by less expensive treatments over time. Ah, I went the wrong way, I'm sorry. So, program objectives, and this gets down to the third bullet item, you beat me to the punch. The program really seeks to bring the current network conditions up to where preservation treatments are appropriate, use preservation treatments to the greatest extent possible to maintain the network efficiently and cost-effectively, and address all the roadway needs, not just the arterial and collectors. So, our study, working with engineering, we're going to be updating the treatment strategies in Lucity. Right now, the city's pavement management system does not make very much use of preservation treatments. We're going to put those treatments into the pavement management program and make sure that it's considering them in its options. We're going to evaluate city pavement management process and make sure that that process does everything it needs to do, wisely considers things. We're going to assist the city with development of a five-year work plan, a plan that would look, I would say a 10-year work plan, but a 10-year work plan is kind of unrealistic if we can look five years down the road. I heard a gentleman talk about water usage earlier. Five-year plan is about as far out as we can crystal ball. And then, prepare 10-year funding scenarios, because we do like to consider funding scenarios longer, to look at the impact of various funding levels on network conditions. And then, we'll present that work plan and funding scenarios to the city council for review. I think that's it. That's, that's all I had.
Any questions?
Just...
You have a finger up, so you must have one.
Yeah, just, just general comment, you know, on the residential, and I know that's in your part there, is, and again, I'm not sure what the exact correct course is as a result of your response on, you know, as those cracks start getting larger, and I hate to see us put money in something and find out, you know, six months later, the cracks, it didn't work, because the cracks are back, but, but, but yeah, I, I see that kind of going through the residential, and I like to see us put some effort on it. But again, I don't want to spending money if the cracks are coming back, so we've got to figure out a way to, when they get big enough, before they get too large, that we fix those roads in the residential areas as well, not to forget about those.
And then, I guess I would come back and ask, because you live in these neighborhoods, how much, how well are you going to tolerate a, a program where you come in and just rip out all of the pavement, replace it new, which is really, I mean, in front of your house, it takes, it's going to take days.
I would think that's going to be very, very disruptive to do that.
Very, and so, it's, it would be less disruptive to, over the course, a short period of time, patch, fill those cracks.
Right.
Not, not seal, but fill those cracks, and then put a surface treatment or something on top of them, so that aesthetically, it looks good, it's going to give you five, six, seven years, and then, you're probably going to have to do something again. If, if I could, if I were like Bewitched and could wiggle my nose and make that go away, I'd certainly find a way to do that, but it's not really...
I think when you have full-blown neighborhoods ripping up the, you know, the street and mill and other lay is, especially with people putting cars on the sidewalks, even though they're not supposed to, but they do it anyway.
The liabilities for kids playing in the streets, all kinds of things.
Yeah, right. It becomes a nightmare. But at some point, you want to keep that thing growing and growing and growing, that crack where it becomes where you have to do that. So, I guess the point I'm making is, is hopefully, we get that within the plan before it gets to the point where you have to do what you just mentioned. That's the last option you want, is ripping stuff up.
We're going to be working, and I'm going to be researching, actually, strategies, so that we can hopefully come up with ways to mitigate that as much as possible.
Okay.
So that we can give the city some options to, to consider on that.
And I have one last question, but I really know the answer, but I just want to hear somebody else. I know rubberized costs a lot. That's not quite the word, but is that what the term they use?
No.
Not a term, right, okay. Is that really moreover mitigation of noise, or is it actually a longer-lasting road?
It's a longer-lasting material. Rubberized, and it's actually not as expensive anymore as it used to be.
Really?
It's a...
Did you hear that?
It's...
There are areas that I think that we need to be doing that with, and I think those are the areas where we have a lot of traffic riding, right on the edge of the communities, and I'm going to use Bullard. Bullard, between McDowell and Indian School is partially, and the part that actually goes up the hill, what direction am I going? North. North. Is not. And that's, and so, they stopped right there at the, at the bridge. And, and so, I would think that we would want to look around the communities, and those homes that are built very close to the main roads, where there are the four-laners, the two-laners that are traffic, that we would do that, find a way to mitigate that sound. I, to me, I think that'd be a great investment.
Noise is, noise is one of the benefits, but longevity is another one. It's going to last long, it's a more durable pavement, it's more resilient.
So, I don't know how it is when you have to, you would be patching it, in a sense, because in some areas, it wouldn't be, but it would seem to me that would be beneficial.
Mayor Lord, members of the council, this hot-in-place recycle project will have a rubberized asphalt overlay with it. So, these Bullard, Pebble Creek, Indian School, you'll have the rubberized asphalt overlay with this project.
It's not just my neighborhood. I just, I just think, like, Saraville's another one of them, that's getting a lot of additional traffic. If they're going to continue to get that, it would be nice for those, the sound mitigation, and so, I just think there's spots throughout the city. And so, it'd be interesting to look into that, to see what that, as long as we're doing this, what that cost would be.
The entire valley, Phoenix area is a hotbed of activity for rubber asphalt.
Yeah.
Rubberized, it's used, and that's going to drive the price down. I think, what, was it 10, was it 10% more?
Actually, Mayor Lord, members of the council, actually, the rubberized price actually came in at, or just even a little bit below the conventional asphalt with this, with this project, the way it was priced out by the contractor.
It would, it would, I think, is everybody with me, would it please the council? Yeah. To have them look into that for those areas?
I'd like to get some feedback on it.
I think it's important.
I mean, I couldn't get the city center built, but maybe we can just get some rubberized roads.
You'll, you'll have it this year. You'll have a lot of it on some of your, on, all three of those, which are pretty good-sized projects, will be rubber asphalt.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
And Bullard is one of them.
Yeah, Bullard's one of them. Mark, thank you. That was a good presentation.
Thank you very much. It wasn't as controversial as previous ones.